Morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you this morning to Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting on July 7th, 2025. We're going to start with invocation by Supervisor Gould, and if you would remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by Supervisor Borelli.
You join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you, and we praise you today, Lord. We thank you for this great nation that you've given us, the state and this county, Lord. Lord, give us the wisdom to run it properly. Lord, watch over our employees. Many of them have dangerous jobs. Bring them home safely to their family's loving arms. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please face the flag of a country that has brought more prosperity to the world than mankind has ever known. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 34, and 7. Looking for a motion in action to call for an executive session to be held on July 21st, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Read that motion in second. If you have a favor, please say aye. Thank you. Official business to come before the board. Item one, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Davis.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Committee and/or legislative reports. We'll start with Supervisor Letman this morning. Thank you, sir. Supervisor Gould.
Yeah, I think today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Borelli.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. As a matter of fact, this would be some good news from our Senator Angus is here can give us a nice update. We can have her come up.
Yes, welcome, Senator Angus. Thank you for being here.
Hello, Chairman Lincolnfelter, supervisors, Sam Elters, my old friends. It's a little surreal to be up here. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Hildy Angus, and I'm the state senator. I represent Legislative District 30, which is all of Mojave County, La Paz, and Wickenburg. Greatest, greatest district, big district. We finished our session very late this year. There was a lot of back and forth, a lot of dissension, but at the end of the day, I believe that we passed a very conservative budget considering that we have a split government, meaning a Democrat governor and a Republican legislature. And everybody got to have their voices heard, and I think we did the best we can. I'm going to let when Craig Sullivan comes and does his overview of this session, because a lot is hap-- we passed a lot of good laws. We did a lot of great things. But I wanted to come here today to tell you what we did for our district. Representative Lincolnfelter and Gillette and I are a great team. We work together. I'm not saying we agree on every bill and how we vote, but when it comes to protecting and representing this district, we are all on the same page, and we fought this year for money, for projects, really good projects. And if you don't mind, Chairman Lincolnfelter, I'd like to read them off.
Please do.
Okay. We'll start with the county. We got $1 million for Mountain View, the Mountain View bypass road. Maybe one day that will all be finished. We got $1 million for Mojave County Sheriff, wherever he is. And part of that is because DPS got raises this year, a 5% raise. And some of you may not know, I know some of you do know, that whenever there is a raise down at the state, it affects us downhill because, of course, people leave, they want more money, and so it hurts us. So this will offset that. There is an offset in the budget as well for counties to do that. And so we got $1 million for the Mojave County Sheriff. We got $500,000 for the La Paz Sheriff. We got $100,000 for search and rescue training and equipment. Very glad to do that. I didn't know that was a problem. Somebody reached out, and, you know, we'd love our search and rescue. I think that they are by far the best in the state, and so we're very, very happy to help them out. The division was it six or eight, the new court, Steve Moss's new court? We were eight, six? Okay, thank you. We were able to secure $200,000 a year over for three years, which means it will be ongoing for that court. And here in Kingman, we got 1.5 million for the Eastern Avenue extension. I heard that that is more money than you guys were planning, and so we're happy to do that. Then the most important one, and thank you, Representative Gillette, for this, we got $3 million for the Sacramento Basin well pump. And I will let people who understand water more than I explain why that was so important. We also got 1.5 million for Colorado City for their traffic. There is an intersection there that is extremely dangerous. It's where schoolchildren have to walk across the street, and we got 1.5 million. Then we're not really sure exactly what they're going to do with it. We think it might be a traffic light, but they'll work with ADOT to figure that out. Finally, we got 500,000 for the Horizon Six fire hydrants. We've been trying that for a long time. I think ever since I was supervisor, we've been trying to get that done. It will get done this year. In Bullhead City, we got 1.5 million for Hancock Road repaving and 1 million for a much-needed water line. There was also, the budget at the end put in another 250,000 per county sheriff for school safety. So all in all, considering what we had, we I think we got what we needed for Mojave County and our district. And I want to thank you all very much for the support you all gave me during this session. I would love to come back and talk a little bit more about some of my observations, but at this, right now, this is what I wanted to report from Phoenix.
Thank you, Senator Angus.
Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Senator Angus? Supervisor Gould.
So Senator Angus, was it all you expected?
And less. It was, it was very, I'll talk to you about it. It was very, very interesting. I respect everyone down there. I mean, everybody is down there to do what they believe and fight for what they believe. And as Republicans, we know, we know that we are rugged individualists and that we will do what we think is right no matter what, unlike Democrats who tend to go in lockstep with each other, but that's what makes it exciting. So yeah, it was fantastic, and I look forward to going back for the next session. Thank you.
Any other questions? Senator Angus, I just want to say you are just one of the most strong, the strongest freshman senator that I've really ever seen. I've watched a lot of them, you know, and you just went down there, you rolled up your sleeves, you were a champion for Mojave County and Legislative District 30. Thank you to yourself. Thank you to our two representatives that are fighting hard as well. But I have no doubt that now that you know how, you know, things work down there, as you know, you're not a freshman anymore, you're going to just get more, you know, more and more powerful down there. So glad you're in our corner. Thank you.
I had very big shoes to fill, and I heard about it all the time down there. So thank you again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator Angus, you know, I've often said and referred to the legislatures, when you're down there, you have to maneuver through the minefield and the viper pit. Was I accurate on that, or was that just an exaggeration?
100%, and double up on the viper pit. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Supervisor Martin, update?
And I have nothing this morning, so we will move on to lobbyist support. I see we have Mr. Ponder from high ground here. Thank you for being here this morning, Mr. Ponder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members, waiting for the presentation to pop up. All right. Thank you for having me again. Nice to see you all in person. I just want to say, again, you said it, Mr. Lincolnfelter, but Ms. Angus was tremendous down at the Capitol this year. She was not afraid to step up for Mojave County, particularly on water issues, sometimes being the lone vote in her caucus to make a voice for Mojave County in potentially opposing some of Ms. Griffin's bills, which we'll talk about later. So this session, this is our sort of session at a glance slide. So I got a question from Mr. Martin earlier. So this is mainly for Mr. Martin, for Mr. Letman, and the people in the back of the room. Signe di, what does it mean? For any of you who know Spanish, seen dia, without a day. So signe di means without a day to convene. We adjourned signe di on June 27th, 2025, this year, 165-day session. We're supposed to be out after 100 days. Obviously, that did not happen. You know, typically, it's good to keep the legislature there to kind of force them to negotiate, to force people to be in their seats and have conversations to get things done. Unfortunately, what happened is the legislature just kept sending people home for vacations for several weeks on end. And so we ended up getting kind of towards the end of June without a budget, and ultimately, we did get one averting a shutdown by adjourning on June 27. 1,724 bills posted. I've been doing this for 12 years now, lobbying for 12 years. When I first started, I think we were in about, at about 1,200 bills was about the maximum that we would see. Now we're getting up to, you know, 1,700 bills almost every single year. In fact, I think just towards the end of session this year, on the House bill numbers, it rolled over to 3,000. It was suggesting that it would roll over to 3,000 as the next bill number. Rarely do you ever see that. Bills passed 439. The governor vetoed 174 bills. That's a record. Now, I will say that about 30 of those bills were the two budgets that she vetoed at the very end. She vetoed two House budgets that were passed. And so that helped her sort of eclipse her prior record, which I believe was 143. So 174 bills vetoed, 265 passed. On water, which is obviously why I'm here, Colorado River, there wasn't a lot done this year. But the reason I have it highlighted here is because I think what we were looking at this year was that 2026 was going to be the year that Colorado River was discussed. And so that put the main focus on getting groundwater issues done here in 2025. We know that the reconsultation of the Colorado River is going to happen next year. We know that Colorado in particular, and some of the Upper Basin states are being intransigent on some of the negotiations. We know that Arizona, California, Nevada have come to an agreement. And so we were focusing, we were hoping that the focus of the legislature would be to get groundwater solutions done this year, and that 80% of our basins in the state are unprotected. The other 20% either have active management areas, or here, fortunately, we got that irrigation on expansion area in 2022, as you all know, in the Hualapai Valley Basin. So we started off the session looking at it that way. I'll just remind you of this slide that I put in our August 5th presentation of last year, that I shared with you all. This is what we were looking at, seven times, 7x growth in groundwater deficit from 2010 to 2021. Now, looking back at Mr. Holcree's presentation from June 16th of last month, that number is 10x now, not 7x, right? We're at a 50,000 acre foot water deficit. So these numbers are only, have only increased since then, which still tells us, from my perspective, that we're on the right path in focusing on groundwater protections in the Hualapai Valley Basin. So we wanted to continue the work that we were doing. And I will just say, as I look into this, we talk about scope. I want to go back to last year, Senate Bill 1221, which is, we talked about why we opposed that. It took 36 years to get to go from the 1944 groundwater code, the establishment of the groundwater code, to the Groundwater Management Act in 1980. 36 years. And the only reason that got accomplished was because of the Central Arizona Project and $1.8 billion or something hanging over our heads from the federal government, right? In about five years or so, we've moved from nothing happening on groundwater to this being one of the top issues at the Capitol. We've moved the needle. We haven't got there. I regret that we haven't got there. It frustrates me to no end. But I will say, one of the reasons we opposed the legislation last year is that it was of limited scope. In other words, they only focused on a few basins, the Hualapai being one. But we didn't, we were concerned as a county with if another basin needed to be protected. And I put the Sacramento in here, but really, we're thinking of basins like the Canab Plateau and others, that we would have to wait another five or 10 years to negotiate again to try and do that, as opposed to having some framework in statute that allowed for some sort of establishment to take place after that. We had concerns with the banking of groundwater, which meant that the county would be, or water providers would be beholden to last arrivals to obtain groundwater certificates to then grow. That was a concern. We had concerns with the council makeup. 80% of the, or 60% at that time of the council came from outside of the basin. We had concerns with the amount of conservation. Only 10% mandatory conservation at that point in time. For us, that would have kept us at that time at a, I think it was about a 29,600 acre foot deficit into perpetuity. Obviously, now we know with the new groundwater model that it would be higher than that. There were some exemptions for small farms. The problem with the small farm exemption was we weren't sure how many of them there were and how much water that would amount to. The goals were weak, and we weren't sure of if all of the language within the municipal protections were rigorous enough. And the reason I say we weren't sure is because the language literally came out the last day. We had, you know, less than 30 minutes to review it, and it just, it wasn't timely enough for us to be able to confirm everything. So that's why we opposed Senate Bill 1221. That's what we were leading into this session looking at. So we had two competing proposals this year. Senate Bill 1520, which was sponsored by Representative, or Senator Dunn now, from Yuma. I will say, I respect Senator Dunn a lot. He's a great legislator. He's a pragmatic legislator. I think if I could hopefully speak for Senator Angus, I think he truly, in my, I think in his heart, he truly wants to get something done. I think that there are folks that are on the sort of what I would call the special interest side, the Farm Bureau in particular, unfortunately, who hold us back from getting something done. And the reason I say that is because the proposal that they put forward this year, they were less willing to pursue conservation this year, in fact, than they were even last year. And then there was Senator Sunduration's proposal, Senate Bill 1425, and I'll get into some of the challenges with that as we go into some of the strategic challenges here. So the first strategic challenge that I think that we had this year is that we didn't have any Mojave County sponsors, and I'll speak to that a little bit in a moment. First off, Mr. Byasucci and Mr. Gillette were not interested in sponsoring. I think part of that is derived from the 2024 bill was supported by the governor. The 2024 bill was 90% similar to the 2023 bill that was sponsored by Mr. Borelli and Mr. Byasucci. But as politics being politics, there was Governor's Water Policy Council that was bipartisan in nature, but because the governor endorsed it, there was concerns that it was a partisan piece of legislation. And so Mr. Gillette and Mr. Byasucci did not want to touch that bill. Ms. Angus, being new to the legislature, being new to water issues, this is a monster issue for somebody like her to touch. Water is not for the faint of heart. So, you know, it was, it was a hard issue to take on. But more important than that, there were some players in the governor's coalition that were driving the bus in a direction that I think Mr. Lincolnfelter and I were trying to steer them back on course, if I can be candid with you. They were, their efforts were to be a little bit more aggressive in the areas of conservation and cuts. You can see that in bullet point two here. And we were telling them that that was too aggressive. That was, that was, that was too much in cuts. And in fact, we did not, we did not think that that would have been good for somebody like Ms. Angus to sponsor a bill like that. It would have been terrible for her, just professionally, politically, whatever. So, you know, looking at that, that was a strategic failure to incorporate provisions in a bill that make it dead from the moment it's dropped, just to be honest with you. And again, those were against our objectives. You know, had we had, you know, somebody like, you know, Ms. Cobb, who was in the legislature, who understood the issue deep, right, who took it from the beginning, we would have controlled the bill. Unfortunately, we didn't control the bill. Ms. Sunduration controlled the bill, and she allowed other players to influence the language. And so that's kind of where we were at with, with that. And I think that that's what we think from a Mojave County perspective was a miscalculation. Once the language got released, the Farm Bureau, the cattlemen, the dairymen, they see that language. They see this, this percent cut as 40% in cuts, even though the reality is the local council determines what the cuts are. It may not be 40%. It may only be 10%. But they see the high-end cuts, and they say, our farms are going out of business, inflationary pressure on food prices, et cetera. You know, this, you know, we can't deal with that. This bill's dead. And that's exactly what happened. We really only had two meetings thereafter. Again, I think from a Mojave County perspective, our advice was counter to this. I still worked diligently, and I think Ms. Angus can speak to this through her and my conversations, through our conversations with Mr. Dunn, through my work with Mr. Lincolnfelter and legislators down there as we met with them, that we were still trying to get the conversations off the ground, still trying to get the negotiations going. But there were two formal meetings that happened, but nothing that really manifested in the way of negotiations. And again, I will just say that the Farm Bureau kind of walked back their, what they were willing to do last year. They also, as I said at the beginning, in Senate Bill 1221, that language had 60% of the council being local, I'm sorry, 60% of the council being out of county, or out of basin. In the bill this year, it had 80% of the council being out of basin. So how could that be local in nature? We always talk about local control. In fact, I think Ms. Griffin often talks about this issue as consent of the governed. And my comment in committee when this bill came up is, how could this be consent of the governed when only 20% of the representation is from the governed? And so we had significant challenge with that piece of the bill. When it, when we talk about the small farm exemption that I referenced in 1221, in 1221, there was a two and a half acre foot cap per acre, per acre on the small farms. This year's version, there was no cap on the amount of acre foot of water that those farms could use. So they could use eight acre feet of water per acre, regardless of what crop they were producing. So the bill got worse this year than it was last year in many ways. And so that, that created some frustration for us. And finally, I will just say, on bullet point five here, I think the frustration from us, that those of us who represent rural Arizona, you guys, myself, I've been doing this for three and a half years now. I constantly preach this at the Capitol. One of my biggest frustrations is, is that every single time that urban Arizona needs something on water, they get it in one session. When rural Arizona needs something on water, it takes a generation to get it. And that should not be the case. And it's incredibly frustrating. And so this year, there was an issue that was called ag to urban. It's a bunch of agricultural farms in the active management areas in Phoenix and Penal County. And the effort there was to convert those farms, to allow those farms to convert to home building and to be able to move the water off of the acreage. Now, right now, you can't move the water off of that land in which it's pertinent to. But in order to be able to allow home building, what they were going to do is allow that to happen. From my perspective, this is the greatest leverage opportunity, I think from Supervisor Lincolnfelter's perspective, because he's said it in many papers down in the valley. This was the greatest leverage opportunity in 45 years to get something done on rural groundwater. This is the Central Arizona Project of 2025, right? This is an opportunity to leverage policy to get something done on rural groundwater. Unfortunately, that leverage was not capitalized upon, and the urban Arizona again got their issue resolved, and unfortunately, we did not. And so we were left kind of wavering and trying to get this issue resolved. We were pressuring, we were pushing for these two things to be tied together. Unfortunately, they were not, and so we were unable to get rural groundwater done again this year. It pains me incredibly to say that, to come up here and say that. I don't like coming to you guys and saying that we did not get something accomplished, because that's not what I signed up for. So apologize. But that is how this session manifested. Ms. Griffin--
Let's do seven more minutes, and then we'll get to questions. Is that okay?
Okay. Ms. Griffin ran a lot of water bills this year. She remains to be the obstacle. City of Wilcox, her own district, was actually asking for her help this year to convert out of the AMA. They, unfortunately, she did not, she was not able to even help them get out of the AMA that was recently created by ADWR. She passed 14 water bills. 12 of those were vetoed by the governor. As Ms. Angus referenced, $3 million was allocated from the WIFA fund for a well in the Kingman area. It doesn't specifically say in the legislation that it is for a well in the Sacramento Basin, but it is for a well in the Sacramento Basin. What does that mean? It means you're going to be basically alleviating pressure off of the Hualapai Valley Basin. I put down here in this last paragraph, this will help. I don't want it to take the eye, from my perspective, to you guys. I'm out of contract here at the end of August. That being said, my interest is still in the best interest of these fine people behind me. Whether I'm in contract or not, I don't care. I want you guys to have the best situation for you in the groundwater. I don't, I hope you guys don't take your eye off the ball on this. And just because you have a new well in the Sacramento Basin, you still obviously have groundwater challenges. And so I hope that the well in the Sacramento Basin doesn't alter the vision of me. So with that, upcoming 2026, watch ADWR. They may create more active management areas. I would look towards the Gila Bend Basin and the Renegres Plain Basins of the next two. And then I would imagine somebody will run legislation again next year on this issue. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Ponder. Do we have any questions for Mr. Ponder from the supervisors? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ponder, on those local, supposed local boards, those were appointed positions, weren't they?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Gould, that is correct. Even in the Mr. Dunn's version of the bill, in both versions of the bill, they were appointed positions.
So, so much for the consent of the governed. If the governor's going to control the majority of the seats on that board--
Mr. Chair, Mr. Gould, the way that it worked is the, so ledge counsel, legislative council, so the attorneys at the Capitol, as you know, but for the benefit of the public, the attorneys at the Capitol suggest that for a separation of powers situation, the governor has to name a majority of the members. So what they were going to do was create a scenario where the Speaker of the House, the President of the Senate would submit member names. So those names could obviously come from the Board of Supervisors, could come from the city. So the governed, in essence, you guys, could be submitting names, and then the-- And then the governor would pick from those names. Um, so you're right. It is not a true consent of the governed in the sense that it is elected, but the electeds of the elected could, in a, in a sense.
But my folks don't get to vote for the Senate President nor the Speaker of the House.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Gould, that's correct.
They do get to vote for the governor, but my other question is kind of more on process of the legislative session. So you said that the governor had vetoed thirty House budget bills. I'm curious how she got at those bills when they never went back to the Senate. Um, I graduated from Schoolhouse Rock.
Yeah.
Where both bodies have to vote the same bill.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering how it is, I, I think that's illegitimate to, to put that on her stats because she vetoed bills that had never been, uh, reconciled between the two bodies.
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Gould, let me correct my statement. Uh, they did go through both chambers. I will say that the, the Senate, um, went along with the Hou, they were the House's budgets. What happened was for the, the initial budget, the initial House budget, they did unilaterally without discussion with the Senate, as if they were the only chamber in the legislature. And they passed that budget and said, take it or leave, effectively. Um, and the Senate said, leave it. And then the Senate worked with the governor's office and found a budget. Um, the House initially wasn't going to pass that. So we were at a, at a stalemate. Um, so ultimately what happened was in order to show the House that we were at a stalemate, the Senate said, okay, fine, we'll pass your unilateral budget and we'll send it to the governor and see what happens. And then the House also passed basically a, a skinny budget, so it's just a continuation budget. And then to again, show that we are at an impasse, we'll send that to the governor. So they both did go through the Senate, but, but for all intents and purposes, they were House budgets.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that they actually could round up the votes for, in the Senate for the House's plan.
They did. Um, I served during the reign of Janet Napolitano. Um, she had, I think fifty-six was her record. So Governor Hobbs has, uh, tripled that veto, uh, number, which is rather interesting itself. But, thank you, sir.
Supervisor Martin, any comments?
Yes, just for clarification, we, you know, we hear the comment about councils. And I was looking in the audience and people are thinking and asking each other, is this like city councils in the county? It's not. It's a water council, right? It's a state. So don't get confused with council, city council, local and water councils on the state level.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Mr. Martin, that's correct. It would have been a, a council specific to, for example, the Qualify Valley Basin made up of individuals who had a certain amount of expertise in water and may have had, um, uh, some affiliation with a municipality, with the ag industry, with industrial participation, et cetera. Yeah.
Thank you. One other question.
Of course.
When you're mentioning the new well in Sacramento, are you saying that Kingman will utilize the water that's pumped out of the Sacramento Basin?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Martin, Kingman, uh, the City of Kingman actually already has two wells in the Sacramento Basin. I'm not sure if they are operable because they are old wells. The City of Kingman has, I believe, eleven wells right now. Um, most of them are in the Qualify Valley Basin.
Right.
I believe there are two in the Sacramento Basin. This will be a new well in the Sacramento Basin. And although typically water cannot pass from basin to basin, we have permission in the City of Kingman to pass water from the Sacramento Basin to the Kingman, or to the Qualify Valley Basin, because we're within the same municipal provider.
So you are in effect saying, just so the people in Golden Valley understand, you're fixing to lose water to the City of Kingman. Is that a correct statement?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Martin, the Sa, the Sacramento Basin will be providing water to the City of Kingman. It already is actually providing water to the City of Kingman, but it will continue to do so through a new well.
And how, you're saying that water is currently being pulled out of Sacramento Basin and given to the City of Kingman or utilized by the City of Kingman?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Martin, I think it would probably be best to have somebody like Tim Walsh from the city speak to this. But the City of Kingman obviously straddles two basins. So it, the incorporated area within the City of Kingman is in both the Sacramento and the Qualipai Valley Basin. And so it, it is allowed to pass water between the two. There's a very small portion that's in the Sacramento Basin, um, from the maps that I was looking at, but yeah.
Any, any other questions, Supervisor?
Oh, I'm gonna have more questions about that because that's.
Well, I, I think, um, before your hair catches on fire, what we'll do is we'll, we'll, we'll get Manager Walsh from the City of Kingman to, to really email all of us exactly what their water situation looks like as far as what they're taking out of the Sacramento Basin right now. And so you have the data. But, but yeah, they, they do pull out a little bit of water. This well is, is not going to be enough to, to supplant what they're getting from their main water source. It's never going to be. And then they only have permission to take out a certain amount, so.
Sure, they're pumping like ninety-six hundred acre feet total for their municipality. This would not cover anywhere near that.
Well, we'll certainly make sure you get all the data you need.
Thank you.
Uh, Supervisor Riley, any questions or comments?
No.
Uh, again, Mr. Ponder, um, we worked together for a number of sessions. Um, thank you for, for your diligence. And, and I know that you truly, um, even if there's no contract there, that you truly care about this issue. You, you care about rural Arizonans. I appreciate that fact. Um, it's been an honor to work with you, um, being the lead for water. Um, we were really hoping that, you know, all kinds of bills get introduced at the beginning of the session. And you basically say, introduce whatever you want. Let's, let's negotiate this thing and get it to a place that it's a win for everybody. Um, something that everybody can live with by the end of the session. Um, that hasn't happened for a lot of the reasons that you mentioned. This year, you know, there was a lot of, um, you had fifteen twenty on the Republican side. Um, if there is such a thing as a, I know, a lot, there's, everything is partisan, right? And, uh, water is amongst those things. Um, we were hoping for some solution, some framework in, in the middle between what was introduced. Um, Walpai Valley Basin is really what we're interested in protecting right now. Um, the Arizona Department of Water Resources is, is tasked by the state legislature to do a supply and demand report. Supply and demand assessment on every single basin in Arizona, um, on a five-year basis. It's a, it's a revolving thing. Um, I think in twenty-six, is it twenty-six or twenty-seven, Manager Elters? We had a meeting with ADWR and asked them when, uh, they were going to do supply and demand assessments on the Sacramento and the Detroital and the Canab Plateau. And, and, uh, I think they said twenty-six or twenty-seven is when those were slated to be, um, created. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, yes, correct. Um, your, your recollection is accurate. They have a schedule and some of those aquifers will be in twenty-six and some will be in twenty-seven.
Yeah. So my point being, we'll have more data. It, that, this, one of the main issues is that on a lot of these rural basins, we don't have the data um, to know exactly how much water is in the basin. So we're hoping that with, with these reports that are going to be recurring every five years, we'll start to have that data. Um, we have a lot of data on the Walpai Basin because of the situation. And the things that were mentioned, you know, were just kind of deal killers for Mojave County. We, we thought anybody that was going to be on one of these water councils, you know, that they should actually live in the basin. And that was, that was a point of contention. They didn't want the people to actually have to live in the basin. Um, I think you should have to live here to, to represent the people here. Um, also, um, the whole water credits thing. So as you heard in the presentation, you've had, um, in the past decade, these Saudi Arabian, um, UAE, Central California farms have come into the Walpai Basin. All of a sudden, in, in ten years, they're the majority water user every year. They're using seventy-five percent of the water that comes out of the Walpai Valley groundwater basin. And what, what the fifteen twenty would have done was basically give all of, all of the current water users, it would have closed the basin and it would have given all the current water users what they called certificated water rights. So basically private, private rights to the amount of water that they were taking out. So basically what you do then, if you do that, um, that's a government-created monopoly. Where if the City of Kingman wants to grow, if our industry, if the industrial park wants to grow, they have to go hat in hand to the corporate farms that are from out of the country, basically, and ask for water. And then those, those folks would basically control all the, well, if, if, if water's available, if they even want to give any away, they would control all the terms. They would control cost per acre foot. It's a government-created monopoly. Why would we ever support that? I mean, why would we enrich them on the backs of our citizens? It just doesn't make any sense. So there's a lot of things like that. So we're going to continue the, the work. Um, as you mentioned, the, the, the focus is, and, and especially from Mojave County as well, being on the river. Um, we're pivoting to the Colorado River. Next year is the post-two thousand twenty-six Colorado River guidelines that have to be established amongst the seven basin states. Mexico, this time you have thirty-one Native American tribes that are at the table that weren't involved before. Um, so we have a relationship with Clark Hill, uh, John LaMaster, Attorney John LaMaster at Clark Hill. They were the attorney that Mojave County used to sue the Bureau of Reclamation um, over the Queen Creek, the Greenstone to Queen Creek Colorado River Transfer. We won that. Um, they're supposed to do a full-blown environmental impact study on that process, on that transfer, um, that was precedent-setting. So they're a very good attorney and we're going to have them to help Mojave County in our advocacy on the river. Um, to review, you know, federal documents, prepare our comments, help us with federal, uh, state processes uh, in, in partnership with the Mojave County Water Authority, which is also involved with this stuff. Uh, we have to protect our, our on-river communities as well because Phoenix is running out of water. They're growing and they're trying to come down here and take the last little less than ten percent off of the river and take it down to Phoenix so that they can grow at our expense. And we simply have to fight that at all costs. So we're going to do that.
Mr. Chair, just on the, on the water depth thing that you were talking about on the supply-demand study, just want to be very careful. And I think this was touched on on the June sixteenth, uh, analysis from USGS. Just because a basin may be twenty-five hundred feet deep or something like that, and there may be water down to twenty-five hundred feet deep, doesn't mean you can access it. It can be incredibly expensive. It can be, uh, have incredible amount of salinity. Um, so that, that's another important point to keep an eye on as you get that supply-demand study. Um, and that's why ADWR uses that twelve-hundred-foot analysis. Um, so just something to, to point to as we.
No, that's a good point. Um, during this whole thing, Mojave County and the City of Kingman have been very, very close. I mean, speaking almost daily during the session. Um, and I wish that the legislatures would, would ask the, the local communities that are in this type of situation, you know, what would be good, right? I mean, there was, on the Democrat side, they're looking for forty percent con- conservation. We would never get there. I mean, you talk to our locals here, we think we could manage maybe twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five percent, uh, conservation over, uh, management periods. Um, it's that kind of stuff that, you know, we just have to keep hammering on next session and um, it's, it's like, hopefully it's like a tree and you just keep chopping at the tree and one day the tree has to fall. Um, whether I'm here or it's somebody else after me, but, um, we have to get it done because there is no alternative. I mean, we don't have really a, um, really strong Plan B as far as additional water supplies to round out the City of Kingman's water portfolio. So we'll keep hitting it. But thank you again for your service.
It's been an honor representing the county, Mr. Chair. And, uh, again, if you, if you guys, whether I represent you or not, and obviously I'm not going to, but if you seek somebody to represent you, like I said, it's not an issue for the faint of heart. I've only been personally attacked as a lobbyist twice in twelve years. Once was when I was fighting the flat tax on behalf of City of Kingman. We did that successfully. The second was this issue. Um, and so I, I hope you guys find somebody that can help you in that and, uh, for these fine folks behind me because it's a really important issue. So good luck.
I'd say it's the most important issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the county manager's report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do not have a report today.
Thank you, Sam. We have one presentation this morning. Uh, presentation regarding Mojave County Highway User Revenue Fund Outlook Needs and Priorities Given by Public Works. Director Lotosky.
Morning, Chairman Lingonfelter, members of the board.
Morning.
Presentation. Thank you for this opportunity to present on county road operations and funding, which are delivered by over a hundred and thirty public work professionals dedicated, uh, to operating and maintaining the counties, uh, over twenty-one hundred miles of roadways. Uh, this first slide, and, uh, fortunately, a little bit of it is off screen, but, uh, nonetheless, this, uh, first slide is, uh, designed to show our revenue need. Uh, Mojave County, uh, funds the maintenance and operation of its, uh, roadways through primarily in appropriation of the State Highway User Revenue Fund. Um, that is the dominant, uh, transportation revenue source. Uh, this includes, uh, the collection of the eighteen cent, uh, unleaded fuel tax, a twenty-six cent, uh, diesel tax on the heavy vehicles, as well as various, uh, uh, user fees, uh, for, uh, transportation. Uh, we also receive a, uh, an appropriation of, uh, vehicle, uh, um, um, vehicle, uh, uh, use tax, um, VLT, um, that, uh, uh, also is part of our, uh, transportation, uh, funding. Putting this together, uh, and looking first at our operations, our operations include full-service engineering and surveying work. This includes, by the way, uh, use permitting, uh, certain design services, uh, traffic, uh, engineering work, traffic town collection. Uh, also our traffic control, which provides full service, uh, maintenance and operation of over thirty-two thousand traffic signs, uh, about eight hundred and seventy-six, uh, miles of, uh, uh, pavement striping. We do all of that in-house, fabricate the signs, install, maintain them, as well as, uh, e- heavy equipment maintenance. Uh, we maintain over two hundred pieces of, uh, heavy equipment. So on the operations end, uh, that, uh, takes up about one half of our, uh, of our annual, uh, HERF and VLT revenue. However, turning to road maintenance, um, what you, uh, see on the last two rows is really a ground-up estimate uh, of our road maintenance responsibilities. And we are a dedicated department to road maintenance. Uh, we're into it for preserving what we have. And with regard to dirt road maintenance, we maintain about one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight miles of, uh, unsurfaced roadways. Taking the fully burdened rate of a blade operator and the equipment and attaching a speed that it takes to maintain roadways and a frequency by which we maintain roadways, which our target is, uh, eight times a year for regularly maintained roads and two times a year for first-rate maintained roads, our expense is estimated about four point eight million dollars a year. Turning to paved road maintenance and our, we maintain about eight hundred and fifty-one miles of paved roadways. Uh, our target is to provide a trip seal, uh, surfacing, uh, once every seven years for our county highways and arterials and once every ten years, uh, for our, uh, county, uh, local residential road. And that amounts to about five point eight million dollars. Now, we make these figures work in our budget. We balance our budget, uh, by and large, uh, every year. But as you can see, our revenue source, by and large encompasses the scope of our operations and maintenance. But what is left out is our reconstruction, our improvement of our existing road. So, uh, we do see about eleven point seven million unencountered for, uh, for road reconstruction. And that's why we, uh, do our level best and, and invest heavily into our existing road maintenance. So those roadways don't fail. Um, just for perspective sake, uh, we anticipate, uh, road reconstruction. We actually have a more extended service life, uh, looking at about fifty years of, of reconstruction of our county highways and, and arterial roadways and about seventy years for, uh, of our residential roadway. And this is a snapshot of our, uh, current revenue and cash reserves. Uh, we have been trending rather consistent, uh, over the course of the last number of years in our actual, uh, HERF, uh, and VLT revenues. Uh, and we, uh, do aim to have a, a rather, we do aim to have a, a balanced budget, uh, for road, uh, expenditures, uh, uh, this year. Uh, that is short of, uh, a couple of overruns on some ADOT, uh, managed, uh, capital improvement projects. Our cash reserve is health. It's, uh, at fifteen point seven, uh, million dollars. Uh, that accounts for about seventy-five percent of our, of our annual operations, uh, cost. However, I do want to point out, uh, However, I do want to point out some risks, potential risks for our HERF cash reserves. When I became director in the fiscal year 2009, we endured about four consecutive years of HERF decreases during the recession. However, we bounced back and we've seen a rather healthy increase in HERF revenues since fiscal year 13. During the period of probably nine to 18, we did encounter over $7 million of HERF sweep by the state. That means the state was taking more than the dedicated allocation of HERF revenues. And I should point out on the state end, when the state collects the Highway User Revenue Fund, it is the entity that distributes those HERF funds to cities, counties and other entities. Counties received 19% by a distribution formula. As a whole, all the counties in Mojave County receives about 5% of that 19%. And then lastly, market events can happen. The most significant one that we encountered was the one in April 2020, where our HERF revenue dropped month to month by 20%, but then bounced. Some other reserves, some other risks to our cash reserves, namely revolve around storms, some photos from Pierce Ferry Road, Pipe Strings Road, where we lost a culvert in the entire road section. And most notably the Beaver Dam Bridge, which was lost in 2005, reconstructed in 2010. Although we were very fortunate to obtain a substantial amount of federal funds to help us with that bridge replacement. Oftentimes, and almost every time, there is funds necessary upfront. And that would come from the local HERF funds to upfront some of the initial repair and recovery cost. And lastly, I'm going to leave off with this slide because as I mentioned, our revenue need shows a shortfall in, on the capital side and in road reconstruction, road expansion, et cetera. But we've done our very best in obtaining almost $20 million in federal funding over the last 10 years, which typically requires just pennies on the dollar of HERF match. It's usually about 5.7%, but it can be as little as 0% for some traffic safety project. We do have some possible future projects on tap. There's over $14 million of projects that are currently right now in the scoping phase with ADOP. But we're, we're very optimistic that we'll see these projects funded as well. So in summary, the Public Works Department is really inherently focused on operation and maintenance of our existing 2,100 mile road network. And we try to turn to federal and other state funds to advance certain traffic safety and the expansion related projects.
Thank you, Director. Any questions? Supervisor Martin.
Rick Latafsky, when you talk about possible, these projects possibly widening the road, what does that actually do? What are you looking at?
Excellent question, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Martin. Mojave County has a problem. It has a problem with lane departure crash. About 80% of our crashes are county ride, involve lane departure. It's either running off the road or crossing the center line. And one of the countermeasures by which we can approach mitigating, or at least lessening the likelihood of these road departure crashes are shoulder wide. And we have found through our involvement with WACOG and studying countywide crashes and where they're occurring, how severe they are. We are landing on segments such as Stockton Hill Road, Pierce Ferry Road, White Hills Road. And that is actually what has precipitated these projects as you see here on Stockton Hill and White Hills Road. I must make an important point, and that is when we go after federal funding, we have to show a certain benefit cost. We are not going to get federal funds just because we want to do a project that dislocates. We actually have, I hate to use, I hate to say it, but we actually have to use the value of fatal crashes and, and the monetary value of that and show that it overweighs the, but that's.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. At this time supervisors, before we get into the consent, I'm going to bump up two public hearings. I'm going to bump up item number 49. I'm going to bump up item number 56. We have a lot of people here this morning and we'll get them out of here. And so they can get about their day. So I'm going to open up the public hearing for item number 49 first. Discussion and public action, or possible action regarding approve or deny BOSS Resolution Number 2025-100, a special use permit for assessors parcel number 12019125 to allow for a child, a childcare group home for up to 12 residents in an RE 2.31A residential recreation, 2.31 acre minimum lot size zone in the Havasu Heights vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended denial by a seven to one vote. We have several people that have signed up to speak during the public hearing. I'm going to call you by name and you'll have three minutes. Madison Wheeler, is that okay? Madison Wheeler, if you'd state your name and address for the clerk, we'd appreciate it. Please proceed.
Chairman, I'm Sherry Pontalillo. I'm the applicant. Did you want Madison Wheeler to go first?
Did you want to go first? Or did you want to go? Yeah, we can, Maggie Aldridge, is that you? Sherry, that's you? Did you want to go first?
Yes.
Okay, we'll let you go first then. Sherry.
Thank you very much.
Pontalillo.
So this is our first rodeo. I apologize. How do I get the PowerPoint to come up?
Let's see, do we have somebody that might be able to help with the PowerPoints? Adam Clerk.
There we go.
Someone from IT? There we go.
There we go. Thank you very much. So I want to thank you all for entertaining us. We were able to meet with many of you and provide you with some information. I just want to say very much thank you very much for that, for your time and consideration and your valuable input. As you're aware, this is a project regarding, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, a group home for foster teen girls. And it is, we need a special use permit because we are being very transparent in our future plans. Rather than going with a small number, getting it approved, or not even needing a special use permit, we do, we would like to go up to 12 girls. That would be the sweet spot. We are open to doing fewer than 12 if that's necessary. So I also want to let you know, we provided you with some binders. And the purpose of that was to provide you with facts in an organized manner and some documentation that refutes many, if not all, of the concerns that the neighbors have. It's organized with eight key topics. Those are the colorful tabs and five large white tabs for addendums and documentation. This information includes a description of the project, which I'll get to in just a moment. Information regarding the property, the site maps, a simple rendering, preliminary floor plan, and most importantly, I think an FAQ as well. We were very thorough in our approach to addressing the neighborhood objections. We collected their objections from a town hall meeting, social media posts and other, other methods. And we've thoroughly addressed those concerns and we've put to bed many of the misconceptions. You can look at tab five for that grid. You know, misinformation continues to circulate. I heard another one today that one of the speakers will address, and that is that we're putting in a group home for women that need therapy or some kind of care. That is not true. This is for teen girls. Pardon me. Also, we have notable support letters. We have a list in there of over 400 individuals, excuse me, who signed an online petition in support of our project. And I want to mention that this is a project that will benefit all of Mojave County, not just District Five. We've also engaged Peter Furlough to opine on the legal aspects that were raised by the attorney hired by the Havasu Heights area. And I don't know at what point you would like to bring him on, but he is standing by as I understand it. Now, while there's not a huge sea of yellow shirts behind me, I can assure you that our support for this project is immense. We just don't have an army of people that. I can continue, correct?
Everybody gets three minutes. If we have, if the board has questions after the public hearing closes, we can ask you to come back up to the podium to answer those questions. Is that okay?
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Aldridge. Followed by Madison Wheeler, you're on deck. If you could speak into the microphone, please, thank you.
Sure, sorry guys. So my name is Maggie Aldridge. My residence is 1111 Sherwood Court in Lake Havasu City. I own multiple businesses within the community of Lake Havasu. One of them happens to be Maggie's Lab Cab, and I've served a lot of my community and thousands of people. I've started a trade school recently, which I'm servicing a lot of the youth in my community. Again, it's medical, so we're going to be servicing a lot of the community. So I learned about this project short notice through social media. And I found it to be super important because it's touched my life individually. So I've had employees that have had traumatic family problems and then they ended up having some bad choices and they lost their kids. So I helped them in their process of rehabilitating and they were able to get their kids back. They have their RN license and they've helped thousands in 15 years' service. My sister, she's bipolar. She struggled. She was an elite athlete. She won the World Series. In her mid twenties, she ended up with bipolar and it totally redirected her. She has multiple degrees, but she can't manage the day to day. So I currently have custody of my niece and nephew, and my nephew is going to the fire academy next year. My niece, she works in the imaging center for ATOSI. So they are obviously giving back to their community. So I've had people that, hey, give me a shot throughout my career. And I'm sure you guys all have been there at some point throughout your career. These people are our future, these youths. It's, it's a public issue. I'm not coming from this organization. I hope to be an asset to them, but I see this as a, a community issue. Not all government money is there to be able to fill the need in our community. So we depend on this private money in order to be able to fill the gaps. And that's why I showed up today and cleared my schedule because I see this as a community issue. So if we don't take care of our youth, who's going to take care of us? That's a big question we need to ask ourselves today. And so I am very invested and I see it as a personal responsibility to make sure that these kids get what they need. So you can count on me to help this program as much as possible because it's needed in our community. A lot of these kids are having to be relocated and it's their support system that they're losing. They aren't coming from other communities. They are our community. And I take pride in the community that I come from, that we take care of each other. So I'm hoping that you guys will give these people the opportunity to do what we do best in Havasu and let's take care of our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madison Wheeler.
Madison Wheeler, my address is 2990 Palo Verde Boulevard, North, Lake Havasu City. Good morning supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Madison and I represent the team behind this project. A trauma informed, state regulated home for teen girls in foster care located in Mojave County. Let me begin by acknowledging the reality. We are aware that this project has generated concern from the neighborhood and I want to clearly say that we understand why. When people hear the words group home, it triggers fear rooted in misunderstanding or past experiences. And that's why I'm here, not to dismiss those fears, but to offer clarity and truth. This is not a facility, not a detention center, not a halfway house. There will be no signage, no sirens, no loitering, no crowding and no disruption of peaceful residential character of this neighborhood. This is a home built to the same residential standards as its neighbors that will house a maximum of 12 girls, eight within the first year, aged 12 to 17, who are already in the care of the Arizona Child Department of Safety. These are not juvenile offenders. They are foster youth who have experienced trauma, abandonment, abuse, neglect, and they need stability, not another displacement to a county otherwise unknown to them. Right now, when there's no placement available in this county, these girls are shipped to other cities, far away from their siblings, their schools, their communities. They lose everything familiar and they have to start over again. This home prevents that and solves this systemic problem. We've taken every measure to ensure that this program is as low impact as possible. Staff shifts are staggered to minimize traffic. Transportation is limited to vans. Visitation is offsite. There is 24/7 awake staff supervision and the property will be regulated by both DCS and Arizona Department of Health. We're proud to meet and exceed those set state licensing standards, but more than that, we're committed to being good neighbors. If this were your daughter, your niece, your sister, wouldn't you want her in a home like this? Close to people in places that know her? We do not take that responsibility lightly. This project was not created behind closed doors. It was built with transparency based on a real need for over 300 children in foster care in this county with only 77 licensed homes to serve them all. There's no group homes currently available to foster youth in Mojave County, and that's a gap that we must fill, not out of convenience, but out of moral obligation. You have a chance right now to be a part of a solution that changes lives, not just policy. The girls who live here are not a threat to this neighborhood. They're children surviving trauma. They need what every child needs, structure, care and a safe place to heal. This home gives them that. And with your continued leadership and support, we can show the community that Mojave County stands for compassion, safety and a future worth fighting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Timmons.
Good morning. I'm Marie, otherwise known as Cookie Timmons. I am a, my address is 7694 North Sierra Vista Drive. I do live in Havasu Heights. I am here to represent the people that are in favor of this, this home, but are not able to be present. In calling around my neighbors, I found at least eight other people that were unwilling to speak out or be present because of the volatility of some of the people that were against. So just to let you know, I come from a broken home. I was in foster care while we were hiding, living in fear of our dad finding us. So I get how those girls feel. This is personal to me. I'm also a retired teacher of job skills, life skills, which these young women are going to need to be successful in the community. I plan to be available to help support them. I have chickens and turkeys and a giant garden. And I plan on helping them to establish those things in their community that they would like to do. So this is, it's normally a very supportive neighborhood with very few, very few strong objections, but there are some that are swaying others. And I think they are afraid of the change. So one lady sent me her, I gave a handout to you guys that they had a next door app, one, some, one neighbor, Karen Williams was, they were approached when there was the, the signing, the petition was going around. And this was what she posted. She said, Havasu Heights neighbors, there are two women knocking on doors that came to my place with a petition signed to stop what they called Project 928. They said, our city wants to change our zoning and bring a halfway house to out here for women. They said, these women are being rehabilitated. I ask for proof or any information to verify. They did not have anything. They said, no. But one woman did text me this. I just wanted to say that their information was very deceiving. The only thing that came up for Project 928, that is a foster care, which means you have to be under 18. These are children, not criminals, no record, nothing to do with jail or rehab. It was also disturbing the way they came onto my property on a private drive and parked in the middle of our front patio with pavers, with pavers. Just wanted to let everybody know, heads up, do your research before you sign anything that's, that you don't know about.
Thank you, ma'am. Amber Smith.
I'm Amber Smith. My address is 3285 Silver Saddle Drive in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. I am the founder of Impact 928. Throughout this application process, there have been concerns and speculations expressed about Impact 928's relationship with Calvary Baptist Church and us appearing to hide something. We are a completely separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit from Calvary. And Calvary as an organization does not inform any of our decisions, nor is it involved in how we operate in any way. To be transparent with you all, I do work for Calvary personally. And when I founded Impact 928, I was legally advised not to use a home address for any filing. And when I founded Impact Nine Two Eight, I was legally advised not to use a home address for any filing. And since I have a mailbox at the church for work purposes, I was given permission to use the church's address for Impact Nine Two Eight's mailing. Since the church has done this in the past for other nonprofits. As our activity has increased, we have decided to get a P O box this year in, in our name. And since then, we have changed our address with the Arizona Corporate Commission and it will be changed with the IRS on our next year's taxes. I will say it is actually a nice compliment to me and to us and the church that people think we are associated because we do have a similar mission to love and serve our community. As a follower of Jesus personally, it is my personal goal that everything I do is to reflect what Jesus did. And he served people and cared for the forgotten and seemingly unimportant. This is what Impact Nine Two Eight is trying to do for the foster children in Mojave County. Sadly, it seems that this and other aspects of our plan have been misrepresented and caused distraction from the core issue at hand, which is our ability and willingness as a community as a whole to care for children in need. It is true that these landowners have rights and a voice and a few don't want these children to be their neighbors. But sadly, these children who have been displaced, traumatized, and discriminated against do not have the same rights or voice as landowners. Though we cannot change the laws that are in effect currently that create this imbalance in our community. We can ask that you see these foster children as children who have value and as people who need a safe and caring home. This is what we are seeking to provide. So you can please vote to approve this home so we can care for these children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kimberly Tuba?
Hi, Kim Tuba, Lake Havasu City, Arizona. I'm a board member of Impact Nine Two Eight. In twenty twenty-one, my husband and I began the process to become a licensed foster family and quickly realized our community lacks support and resources for foster families and children in care. I connected with Impact Nine Two Eight and was invited to be on the board. We agreed that the foster community was underserved and began looking for opportunities to support these families. Currently Mojave County has around three hundred children in care and only around seventy licensed homes, which means many of our children are placed outside of our county. Our community, being full of seasonal visitors, retired couples, and weekenders, is a hard community to recruit foster families in. We began speaking with people who had more experience and insight and the reoccurring topic was how our county has no group homes for foster youth, which is why I am standing here today. There seems to be concerns regarding safety, police response, and escaping. Regarding public safety, this home will have twenty-four hour professional staff supervision. The staff must undergo DCS background checks and extensive training. These youth are not offenders, but children in need of a stable, caring environment. With trained staff on-site around the clock, incidents involving runaways or law enforcement intervention are expected to be extremely rare. Our program is designed to promote safety, stability, and healing. This building will look like any other home on the outside, but on these inside, these girls will be receiving maximum support. They will be given the tools they need to heal from trauma, loss, anger. They will be taught skills like cooking and budgeting. They will be connected with mentors in the community and be able to plan out their futures, whether it's college, trade schools, or business ownership. They will be given hope and self-worth. When you support this vision and these girls, you are not just impacting their lives, but you are impacting the lives of their future children. In twenty twenty-two, our son joined our family through the foster system. He is one of nine siblings who are all placed into care. I like to think that God has big plans for this bunch because today, I'm sorry. All of them are in loving, caring homes and are now being given the support that they need. They are starting to heal from the trauma and the pain that they have experienced. I have been a part and witnessed the healing it can bring to a child when they are given the care and support that they need. I often think about what this picture might have looked like if their mom had been given that same support. The same support we intend to give these girls that will one day step foot into this home. Their story and our story would probably look a lot different. Regardless of the decision made today, these girls will be entering DCS care and due to the lack of licensed foster homes, they will be placed in group homes outside of our county. We have an opportunity to change their path. These girls are members of our county and they deserve to remain in it. If you want to reduce addiction, homelessness, and poverty in our community, you can start with them. Thank you so much for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Diana, uh, Santa. Followed by Mary Van Roy.
Hi, I'm Diana Santa. I live at four two four four East Wagon Wheel in Havasu Heights. I'd really like to talk about their, their application, which is amazing, by the way. On the application, they talk about helping hundreds of people, not just foster kids, but underprivileged children or people and seniors. So if I just want to focus on the foster care, what they claim is that there are eighty-three homes, as we said, uh, foster care, licensed. But then they say they'd like to increase that by thirty-five percent or thirty new families per year. They claim that in two years, this is their application. They'd have sixty new homes and they could potentially foster three hundred children. Now we're down to twelve. So my concern is the initial application talking about helping all these people with the money that they were collecting, which is just donations and it's just fundraisers. Could be so much more helpful in helping these foster girls that they're talking about. And these foster girls that have come and, and stated they were in the foster care system. They didn't say they were in a group home. And these are, this group home is, there's no privacy. The bathroom has four bathrooms, uh, four toilet stalls, four sinks. It's a, a gym locker. I find it really difficult to think that this is, would be considered a home, a family situation. Because at the end of the day, all the information that I've read out there states that group homes are not the way to go for these children. Foster care homes, because it's a family situation. So let's go back to their initial application and let's support them in finding more foster families. That to me sounds like a huge change and it sounds like it could help a heck of a lot more, even if they only focus on the foster children and not on the senior citizens or the underprivileged. If they put all their million dollars, this is going to cost, by the way, between land, building, supplies, furnishings. That money, if you calculate, use their calculations at three seventy-five a person to help, could help almost twenty-seven hundred people in one year in Lake Havasu City. Now I, I feel that this is just irresponsible and I think that it's a waste of, of good money that can be used to go in a direction that would be way more helpful than just twelve girls. And they want to start with eight. It, it doesn't make sense to me and with all the wasted money that we see all the time. I really would support them in their initial, uh, challenge of foster care homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mary Van Roy and I live at forty thirty-four Blue Canyon Road, Lake Havasu City. And, um, before I start my little talk, I did ask the CASA office to update me on the number of, um, children in care. And they believe right now, because it changes every day, three hundred and thirty-one and about half of them are outside of Mojave County. And I know the number's usually been up to like five hundred or so kids. There's a lot of kids right here in Mojave County that need attention. And these, I write letters. This is the most recent one. I'll, I'll try and put some more up over the last few years. Thank you, Chairman and Supervisors, for listening to us. My husband and I were foster parents from about nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-eight. And I was a stay-at-home mom. My kids were in junior high and I loved having little babies around and little children. And I, I had a lot of joy out of that. Um, I've been a court-appointed special advocate, a CASA volunteer for over twenty-seven years. And in all that time, I've had some really amazing kids that I've gotten to know. And that's the important thing, getting to know these kids through no fault of their own that end up in foster care. So I have a lot of success stories. I've seen them become twenty, thirty, even forty-year-olds with my foster kids back in the eighties. In the most recent years, a lot of my kids that I advocate for, I just made a list of some of the cities they've been to. Williams, Belmont, Saint John's, Florence, Tucson, Prescott, Phoenix, Goodyear, Heber, Over guard. So you can see we're DCS workers, mental health workers, um, parents' visitation that DCS usually has to facilitate. It's, it's just out of, um, control. It's, it's gotten just crazy. So I'm taking one, one child who's only eight years old. And again, through no fault of his own, the state, after years of allegations and child abuse hotline calls, finally take this child into care. So I'm just thinking of just school at this point. So the first school, he rarely showed up with, when he lived with his parents and, um, he didn't come prepared to learn. He hadn't really been fed or dressed properly or cared for. So, um, he gets sent down to the, when he becomes a dependent child in the Mojave County court system, he was put into the, um, Welcome Center in Phoenix. And we all say we match the children to homes, but it doesn't usually work that way. It's wherever there's a bed available. So the first place was six hours away from our community. So that's school number two. Then, um, they found a kinship placement here in Kingman, which was like an ideal situation because they thought maybe this will be permanent. So then that's another school. And actually this school was terrific. They got him into an I E P and they worked with him and they loved him, took care of him, and he actually improved a hundred percent. Then that kinship placement had to change. So they, in one day's, I'm already almost there. One day's time, they move him to, um, back to the Welcome Center in Phoenix. And at the Welcome Center, they find a-
Sorry, you're, in fairness to everybody else, your time is up.
Anyway, he's got lots of schools he has to go through. I have a lot more to say.
Kimberly Zanin?
Good morning. I'm Kimberly Zanin. Uh, I live in Lake Havasu, Arizona. Thank you, all of you, for letting us come and speak to you. Some of you know me, um, from the recent year of running for state senate. I began this foster journey in Mojave County in twenty twenty-one. At the time, I was working with the CASA program and I saw firsthand the heartbreak reality of our, with our children face. The number of local kids being removed, shipped far from the community was overwhelming. It stirred something deep inside of me. In twenty twenty-three, Ms. Van Roy and I went on, went on to talk to local elective officials pleading for help. When the doors didn't open, we went to state level. I spoke with lawmakers, agencies, anyone who would listen to us and still nothing. That's when I ran for state senate. I figured this way, one day, maybe somebody would start hearing my voice because I got out there into the public. And now I'm here again, standing in front of people that can actually make a difference and help. At a recent zoning meeting, someone brought up the tragic story of Emily Pike's. This story is heartbreaking, but we have to take a look deeper. Emily didn't run because of the group home was bad. She ran because she needed to get back to her community, which her tragic story ended horribly. But I can also tell you of a story that Mary and I know deeply because she was the CASA while working for me. We had a child that was desperately, uh, removed from her mother because of her addictions and shipped to Phoenix because, uh, we had nothing nearby to get her there. She was a sixteen-year-old beautiful young woman. She ran from that home, not because the group home was bad, but because she desperately raised her own mother, her addictions, that she thought if she was that far away from her mother, her mother would die. She ran and we couldn't find her for days and weeks. Thank God, by the grace of God, she made it back safely. But this child made it very clear that if we remove her from their, her community, she would run. At one point, they thought of moving her all the way to New York. Could you imagine? We would never have saw that child again if they would have done so. So keeping our children here saves our children. And I know this because of the community of being working in this CASA program for so long. The foster homes, uh, excuse me. This foster home isn't just about Lake Havasu. It's about the, just all your districts because we're removing children from each one of your districts. Kingman and Bullhead are probably the highest amount of children that get removed. If we, if you vote against this permit, I ask you, where should these kids go then? Because if this is not the place, if this is not the location that you guys are going to vote yes or no for, then where is it? I've emailed multiple times to some of you on the board asking for help. So I'm asking for help once again. Please make the right decision.
Thank you. Of course. Uh, is there anyone in the audience today that we, that did not sign up that would like to speak on line number forty-nine? Please approach the podium. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Janine Wart. I live at seventy-six oh nine North Valley View in Havasu Heights. I want to counter some of the things that I've heard this morning. It's not so much that we object to the group foster home. The main objection is where it's placed. It should be in town. We are more than thirty miles from towns and services. The girls will have nothing to do away from friends, schools, families, shopping, the river. We're in the middle of the desert. There's nothing for them to do there. It's a quiet retirement community. And statistically speaking, group homes should be the very last resort. Why not place it in Lake Havasu City or even in Kingman? Where they will have more opportunities and services to provide for them. Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, is there anyone else in the audience that did not get to speak? Okay, here, uh, let me close the public hearing first. I'm going to close the, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, is he, um, okay, is the attorney, uh, on teams that wants to speak as well?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. You have three minutes. Please proceed.
Sounds good. Um, so, good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Peter Furlough and I'm here on behalf of and in support of Impact Nine Two Eight's proposed use. I'm going to try to avoid repeating a lot of what has already been said. But, uh, at the outset, it's important to note that they've already closed on this private property and invested over a hundred thousand dollars on this property to date. As mentioned, this would be the first licensed group home for foster girls in Mojave County and this use is heavily regulated. The Arizona Department of Health Services oversees licensing and compliance, uh, including certification requirements, insurance, record-keeping, staff qualifications, number of required caretakers, nutrition, safety, site security, and daily program standards. In fact, there's about sixty-five pages of strict rules that govern this use in the Arizona Administrative Code. That means Impact Nine Two Eight will have to meet these strict state operational and staffing requirements in addition to the rules in the Mojave County building, zoning ordinance, and local conditions of approval you choose to impose through the S U P process. Impact Nine Two Eight has been told to find a more commercial area for this use. The proposed use is a four thousand square foot home on more than two acres that would not be compatible with commercial zoning. The goal is to provide normalcy in a traditional residential home and neighborhood setting, not in a business park near strip mall off the highway. That kind of setting would only add more instability for these girls and defeat the very purpose of the program. We know neighbors have concerns and we're not dismissing them. In fact, staff has already included in the S U P a clear safety net at the disposal of this very board. Namely, stipulation six allows the board to revoke the S U P with just sixty days' notice if the use is ever found to negatively impact the public health, safety, or welfare. This built-in oversight offers strong proactive protection for the neighborhood. Additionally, we've heard concerns from neighbors about what happens if this home needs to close, uh, or the business needs to close. The answer is straightforward. The property remains a standard single-family home. There's no rezoning being requested today, nor would any be effectuated, and there's no lasting change to the neighborhood with this request. It would remain a home that could go back on the market like any other. Therefore, all we're asking for is a chance for these girls to have stability, structure, and a real opportunity to heal in the community they already know and call home. Today, the board has an opportunity through their vote to show what a supportive, welcoming government can look like to these at-risk youth, all without exposing the county or the neighborhood to any undue risk. In closing, we respectfully request that you give this a chance and approve this S U P for Impact Nine Two Eight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, uh, and then open it up to the board. Would you like to hear from, um, Director Holtry on the Planning and Zoning Commission? Or would you like to bring back, um, the applicant, Sherry Anteleo? What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Martin?
I'd like to hear from, uh, Mr.-
I'd like to hear from Mr. Holtry, from the county's aspect.
Director Holtry, are you on the, oh, there we, okay. We've got an alternate today.
We have Matthew Henderson.
Matt today.
Right.
Welcome, Matt.
Good morning. Sorry you're stuck with me today.
No problem.
Go ahead.
Can you tell, can you tell the public and us what the impact as far as Mojave County is concerned with this request for this group home?
So from the, from the county standpoint with planning and zoning, this type of use kind of falls between a residential type use and a commercial type use. And that's why it's going through this special use permit process. There's onsite staff, there's, so there's different avenues that kind of push it beyond what a typical residence you would expect. But the zoning ordinance allows for these types of uses through the special use permit process. The way the zoning ordinance is written, there's two kind of options or avenues here. One is a childcare group home. The other is an assisted living facility. There's, to be honest, this falls kind of in between the two of them, but we have the ability as staff to be able to try and fit it in the closest fitting box there when we get these types of requests that aren't expressly written out in the zoning ordinance. And so this special use permit is the avenue that we think fits the best.
Another question. Planning and Zoning Commission denied this. What was their basis for the denial?
Chairman Linganfelter, Commissioner, or Supervisor Martin, I can't speak for all of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but there was a lot of public opposition for this item. A lot of strong feelings represented at that meeting. And I think that that was the, probably the biggest indicator on why their recommendation was for denial.
So, so you think, you're thinking that it wasn't, that it's a bad idea, but that the residents that lived in and around there thought it was the wrong place? Is that a, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, Chairman Linganfelter, Supervisor Martin, yeah, that would be, if I were to take my best stab at it, yeah, that's what I would say.
So would, have we received any letters of opposition? I mean, or has the Planning and Zoning Department received any?
Yes, we've received 33 letters of opposition, five letters of support. We've also received petitions, a petition in favor of this item and a petition in opposition to this item.
And, and just to be on point, there is no problem with the county as far as planning and zoning if this was approved?
Chairman Linganfelter, Supervisor Martin, there would be additional steps for them after it's approved. They would have to go through the site plan approval process and do those types of commercial improvements. But yeah, as they meet those requirements of the special use permit, then they would be good moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other supervisors? Yes, Supervisor Letman.
I'd like Sherry to come back up.
Yeah, Sherry, Pontaleo, would you come up actually to the podium, please?
Thank you, Supervisor.
Is this project funded?
We received $141,000 in grant funds from the ARPA, a slice of the ARPA funds that Lake Havasu City was doling out. At that time, we intended to use those funds for, as Diana was referring to, helping the community in a broader sense. We were putting up pools around, or fences around pools for foster families to get, to get going. It was going slower than we wanted. We found ourselves in the end of 2024 needing to use or lose those funds. And so we had also another large contribution of $100,000 to go with the remaining funds from the ARPA grant and we used that to purchase the land. We have had more than I can count significant offers for additional grant funding for our operation, but we have chicken and egg situation. We're not going to go out and seek funds until we know we have a special use permit. But we have many people, many professionals, even some representatives statewide and countywide that have indicated an interest in helping us make this, make this happen. In addition, each bed will be, be, will be subsidized, we will be subsidized by DCS and the state for each child that we have. And to be, we could, we could get by with less than 12, but 12 is a sweet spot for long-term success.
Okay, so you're tapping into, really, I should have restated my question when I said, is this project funded? I was more interested in the day-to-day operations, so like a profit and loss statement. I'm not so much worried about the funding for the building itself. So it was 12 the reason?
Correct.
Primarily because?
We just feel that's the best way to stay in the black. I mean, we could do it otherwise, but that's the best option. And we do have, we, we have put, we've invested in a three-year strategic plan. We've invested in our specialist for congregate care, that's Madison. We have a written out budgets, procedures, and so forth. We're happy to share them with you. We don't want them to be part of the public record, however.
I understand.
For the safety of the girls.
So I was puzzled. You really didn't, in order to have the project approved, you could have gone with less than 12. And Attorney Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we had had 10 girls in the home, we wouldn't be here today. We would, you would not need a special use permit. Is that correct?
That is my understanding and just, I think it speaks to the fact that we are being transparent. We've been accused of not being transparent and I think coming before you and saying, you know, we're not trying to slide under the, under the wire and get something done. We want to do what is going to be long-term successful. And, you know, we're not, we're not trying to take a too big of a bite off the apple either. We are a very small organization where it's going to be a limited scope operation. It's not some big corporate entity that's going to build out, you know, 20, 30, 40 beds. We have no plans to grow beyond that 12.
Okay, that was another question I had was, is there expansion beyond a dozen?
No, not at this time and not in that neighborhood.
Okay. When will, if this approval goes through, when would it open? When, when do you anticipate this happening?
Well, you all know better than I do how long it takes to get permits done and so forth. But no, we have, we have people at the ready. We've already established our architect. We've established our builder. We have an accountant and Realtor on our staff. I mean, we're prepared. We, we're, the board is a lot of very accomplished professional women and we know how to access the help that we need to get this done. So long, the short story, I think we can have it up and running in two years.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Supervisor Gold? Nope. Supervisor Barelli? Supervisor Martin?
Yes, I want to make, I want to, I know we all got this. The 928, I don't know how many people. But I assure you, I did. I wanted to be of these folks. And if it, in my opinion, it was viable and not so bad that it was a problem. I had the opportunity to meet several of their people. I don't want to lie out. My questions I had, in understanding.
This is, this proposal is not in my district. But you know what? It's in Mojave County and that's part of my district. So I was really interested in this and, and I'll tell you this. I have never received so much information, pro and con, on any item that I've had since I've been on the board in six months. So I appreciate what they did and took the time. But I also appreciate and take, and took into consideration the folks that were objecting to it and why they were objecting to it. And I've got a file in my office and I appreciate people that wrote individual letters. You know, there was a comment about, well, it's a form letter that was signed. The letters I got were not form letters that were signed. They were individual letters that stated their concerns. And, and for me as a supervisor, I can tell you this. For somebody to come up and say, I'm against it, and then turn around and walk off, that doesn't do much for me. But for somebody to call me and take me through their objection or somebody to come into my office and tell me why they think it's important, that really helps me. And I, this is going to be a difficult decision, I think, for the board. But for me personally, I feel confident that I've done my due diligence in looking at all the things, asking the questions, understanding what the objections are. And they're, they're real. And I'll go, I'll go on record as saying, I don't think this is a perfect situation. But I have not heard anybody stand up and say, this is a bad idea to help these young ladies in our community. When you hear the numbers of these kids, and I, I have some personal knowledge of a family situation where kids were shipped off. And I think the, the final end result of that deal was, you shipped them off, you took them away from their family environment, their relatives, people they know, and it didn't work. It was not a good situation. So I'll just say for the record, like I said, I've read this. I've heard your objections. You made a great case. They made a great case. And I think the bottom line is, do we really want to help kids in our community? Are we, in fact, a loving, caring community? And I'll tell you what, from my seat, I think we are. Thank you.
Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is my district. I took time to meet with the people that were, that were in favor of the project. I told them that I support their project, but I cannot support it in that location. I made the promise to them that I would help them raise money to buy an appropriate location. You're tugging at my heartstrings, but I still have to look at the people that, the current property owners that are in that neighborhood. I do not think that this project is correct for a residential neighborhood. It's too large. And with that being said, I move that the application be denied.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of second. What's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Chair? Supervisor Barelli?
You have a comment? Mr. Chair, I move that, make a motion that we approve this agenda item. Second?
With that motion second, any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Hearing none?
I'd like to make, yes, I'd like to.
Okay, Supervisor Barelli?
And Supervisor Letman brought this up. Had they just went ahead and built a single-family residence and a family of 10 moved in there. They, nobody would even know anything of the wiser. The fact that they're being so transparent, so professional and by, by incorporating what they need to do to run an operation like this and take care of these kids and keep them within Mojave County. I have seen the impact of kids being shipped off to Phoenix and they end up in a foster home, miles and miles away, hundreds of miles away from their family. And then they run away. And because of the Amber Alert system, because they're minors, they couldn't put them out there because they're in, in foster care. They couldn't even notify law enforcement about that. We had to try to change the law on that. Then they end up in a, then they end up getting arrested. Or for that matter, they, they get trafficked. I just want to make those points. Shipping them off hundreds and hundreds of miles away from family surroundings, familiar surroundings is not a good solution. This is my comment.
Any additional discussion? All right, I'm going to call, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call, we've had a request for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, if you could take us through a roll call vote, please, on item number 49.
Supervisor Letman?
Yes.
Supervisor Barelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Martin?
Yes.
Supervisor Gold?
No.
Chairman Linganfelter?
Aye.
Pass this for one.
Thank you all for your time. And we're going to move also up, we're going to move up the public hearing on item number 56. Uh, 56. I'm going to open the motion or the public hearing for item number 56, which is discussion and possible action regarding approve or deny BOS Resolution Number 2025-120, a rezone for Assessor's Parcel Number 1211613 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to a C-RE 36-acre commercial recreation 36-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a home and campground in the Yucca vicinity. Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended denial by unanimous vote. We have several people that have signed up on item number 56 to provide public testimony. I'm going to call you up by name. Come up to the podium. Please state your name and your address for the clerk. First to speak is going to be Gary Heckman. Gary Heckman.
And that is I, Gary Heckman, 8187 East Yucca Drive, Yucca. My wife Betty and I are permanent residents on a property near the Bennetts' parcel that they are requesting a rezone. We are strongly opposed to this rezone. In the past, I worked for Washington State Parks. My main task was to assess the public impacts of proposed campgrounds. Placing a campground in the middle of a neighborhood would be a train wreck. The Bennetts developed and began operating their campground five years ago. The Bennetts do not live on this campground parcel. They live three miles away by road. Let's look at their actions. Did they obtain legal zoning for the campground? No, they did not. Did they obtain county permits to build a bathroom with showers and toilets, install a septic tank, or lay underground utilities? No, they did not. Did they receive approval from the Statesgoers Trails Neighborhood Association Board? No. Did they talk to the neighborhood board regarding actions that they could take to mitigate the costs of the neighborhood road maintenance needs due to the increased traffic to their campground? They did not. Does this commercial business support or enhance the neighborhood? No. It negatively impacts the neighborhood. Did they communicate with the state or county fire marshal regarding their campground campfire use and management? It's doubtful as they allow campfires to burn year-round, even during periods of high fire danger and fire ban. The closest fire department is an hour and a half away and the Bennetts don't live on-site, delaying any fire suppression need. A wildfire could destroy our neighborhood and could possibly take out our lives. Five years ago, Chuck refused when I asked him to meet with us neighbors to discuss their plans and potential campground impacts to our neighboring properties such as noise. Noise that would degrade our peace and quiet and solitude, which are major qualities we sought when we bought our property. Did they discuss that? No. Did they discuss the increase of people entering our property for which some may be of bad character? No. Did they discuss the likely lowering of our, of our property values and making our properties harder to sell? They did not discuss that. Five years ago, we asked Chuck if he would like it if we built the campground next to his home parcel. He said, no, he would not like it. The Bennetts are aware of campground potential impact. The Bennetts have built and operated their campground in total disregard of laws, permits, regulations, and the surrounding neighborhood. Their actions are a threat to our neighborhood and it needs to stop. Please deny this rezone application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alicia Keys. Cheryl Wilks on deck.
created one time a year. With additional traffic and coming down and around those roads, it's going to need extra maintenance. That maintenance is going to have to be done by the residents that live on those streets. There's no protection for the current ranchers who have open, free range for the area. There's been an increase in cattle that have been killed. Visitors lack the knowledge and respect of the rules and the laws in the area leading to the surrounding property. People wander around. They sometime are wandering around to hunt. They have no idea they're on private property, and they set up a dangerous situation for all of the people that reside around that area. There's a disturbance to the neighborhood, obviously, with the increased traffic last night, or night before last, the house was lit up like a Christmas tree. I'm not sure why. It's not usually like that, but last night, or night before last, it was lit up with all kinds of light. Definitely would decrease the property values. No one lives on the property, as was mentioned, and to oversee this ongoing in and out of people coming doesn't align with the new county Mojave plan. And the lack of integrity on the part of the Bennetts is disgraceful. He stood up here and lied continuously to the commission and said he spoke to all of us as the neighbors, and we were all in agreement. He indicated that the board of the POA was in agreement. None of this was accurate, among many other things, like we're all live on vacant land and that there's only vacant property around him. So today, I just ask that you deny this request, and for these reasons, and for answers that are shared by other people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Carol Wilk. I live at 542 Harvard Court in Kingman. I own property, and I'm also a board member of the Santa Fe Ranch Property Owners Association. I'm not going to go back over everything that the neighbors have said, but I do want to make sure that the board is clear, because during the commission meeting, Mr. Bennett indicated that the property owners' board supported this project, and that couldn't be farther from the truth. We took no position on his application for a zoning change, because we believed he had the right to pursue that. But we did not support this project. I just want to make that clear to the board of supervisors, and just reiterate that all of us out there, we moved out there because we wanted the peace and quiet, the serenity, not because we wanted to start living amongst a bunch of RV parks and campgrounds.
Best, here we go. There's the audio, at least. Well, I guess we don't have to wait until the video gets back up. Paula Golightly, I think we have audio now, at least. I'm going to come up to the podium and provide your testimony, please. Thank you. Yes, take your time. Mary Jane Houlihan, you're on deck.
My name is Paula Golightly. I live at 7903 East Palaverdy Drive, Yucca. I am two 40-acre lots north of this property. And I sent a letter, presented a letter and presented last month for the planning and zoning, and I'm here today to follow up on my letter and the pictures that I sent to the board, showing some of the circumstances.
We have it back up?
Anyway, it is a neighborhood, and I have experienced these people that come to this campground walking, not only on our streets, but I have had them come up my driveway because maps show them they're trying to get somewhere. They have been polite. They've left the property when asked. But this brings in an element of, that we cannot control. I just heard another report in our neighborhood of somebody having all of their new solar stolen. That's my big concern living out there, is what the traffic, are we going to get four-wheel traffic on our roads that are maintained by our POA? That we have no services. These people have open campfires with little access to fire suppression. I have, in my pictures also, if you had access to those, you would see that there's homemade compost toilets visible from the road. It's just, and again, I think that this is not the appropriate area. I would like for us to refer back to the general plan, which shows these kinds of things better served along Alamo Road, where properties have access directly from Alamo Road and don't rely on the use of privately maintained roadways. As everyone else has stated, we have bought into this neighborhood to have this peace and quiet. I know that my family is probably going to start building soon on their properties. I have three neighbors who are going to start building. So this is a growing neighborhood for residential, and for most of them, full-time residents. So I'd just like to ask that you deny this request, and issue a cease and desist order to the Bennetts to stop utilizing this property as a campground. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Jane Houlihan. Jeff Rosnita, you're on deck.
Hi, I'm Mary Jane Houlihan. I live at 19811 South Wagon Trail Road in Yucca, and I am about three miles from Mr. Bennett's campground, Hip Camp Airbnb area. And I'm here to support the neighbors that live immediately next to him. And also, I would like to see this denied, because I would not want someone to come and buy a lot next to me, because we pretty much all own 40 acres. That's a big space. And I don't want someone coming next to my property and putting up RVs, campers, Airbnb, any of those things. So I would like you to not deny. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeff Rosnata, I think I got it better that time, right?
My name is Jeff Rosnata. I live at 21309 South Bonanza Road. I'm about a mile away. And I am here to support my neighbors and friends who live adjacent to the property. They don't want a campground. I wouldn't want a campground, and I don't think anybody wants a campground. Thank you for your time, and I hope you deny this request.
Thank you, sir. The last individual that has signed up to speak on this item is Randall Barrett.
Randall Barrett, 1026 Rimrock, Yucca. I ask that you deny this and uphold the unanimous denial by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I have some documents to put into evidence that, some of these are not available now, because it's been removed from the internet. So I hope we can get this up, please.
Is the IT booth able to get those up on the booth?
Can we pause my time until this is resolved?
We may.
This is.
We may not have that ability right now. There it is. Okay.
Okay. Okay. This here, please extend my time to cover that. This is showing that the LLC was created on January 1st, 2019, for the record. This is the listing that's been removed off of Hip Camp for the Stagecoach Glamping at Wits End. This is where he showed that campfires were allowed. This is reviews from the Chamber of Commerce, showing in 2020, there were some from 2019 that I wasn't able to catch in time before it was removed. This is from Hip Camp, a review from 2021. This is a review from Hip Camp clearing to 2025, so it has continued to that time. And here is a further description that was placed on Hip Camp by Mr. Bennett. So I know that you can't help us with all the problems we're having in Santa Fe Ranch and with our POA board, but I would like you to know that just recently, our board passed 4 to 1, a community code of conduct, which says that they can fine us for speaking against the board or against their actions, both at the meetings or in our private lives. And then recently, Mr. President Rob Hooper said at the most recent board meeting, that if we don't pay those fines, we will not be allowed to attend board meetings or to speak at board meetings. And our only recourse on this is to sue them. So based on this problems that we're having out here, I know you can't help us and fix us with all these things that are going on. But we are experiencing a lot of problems out there, and I just want to thank you here that we still have the right as Americans to come here and to speak to you freely about the things that are happening and to express our concerns to you. So thank you very much, and I ask that you deny this.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that did not sign up that wishes to speak during the Please come up to the podium, state your name and address when you get up. Take your time.
My wife and I live at 20614 Appaloosa Road in Yucca. We purchased this land in 1999. We own 80 acres of this property. We've been full-time residents since 2000. I'm here to oppose the zoning changes. We are friends with Chuck and Joanne Bennett, owners of the campground, and have been for over 20 years. So this is difficult for me to be here. Chuck has been president of our Santa Fe Ranch for a number of years, and he was always a stickler for rules and regulation while in that position. I expected him to follow the rules and thought he was. My home is located only three-quarters of a mile away from his RV campground. I live on a top of the mountain, and I have a two-story home, and I can see his, view his campground from my location. At night, I can see campfires all year long, even in the summer months during the fire restrictions. Some of these campfires turn into large bonfires at all hours of the night. I fear of a fire spreading out of the campground to our homes. I have had a bad experience with fires. About two years ago, lightning struck. Fires started, and I tried to put it out until it was out of control. I called the fire department at 911 to get with the fire department, which I think was in Golden Valley at the time. I was told it would take them about three hours to get there. My wife and I fought the fire ourselves for, and did as good as we can. The fire department never showed up. They never even called. We fought the fire for over 16 hours until it was totally out. I was able to contain it to about two acres of my property, but it could have been much worse, and it could have spread. You can see my concern with RV parks and campgrounds only add to this problem. I've only seen the sheriff three times in over 20 years, and that was at the beginning of Alamo Road, far from my home. Road maintenance barely keeps up with regressing our roads. Most of our roads are not maintained by Mojave County. Oh, I guess my time is up.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Hard be.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony today. Yeah, your time is up, but we thank you for your testimony. Thank you.
Okay. So, well.
Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Gould.
Motion to deny the application.
Heard that motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Supervisor Martin.
I'd like to hear from Planning and Zoning on this issue.
Come on up, Matt.
Matt, we've heard a lot of allegations about lack of permits, illegal operations, and all that. I just, are you folks aware of that?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Martin, yes, we are aware of it. Staff had a previous code complaint a couple of years ago that was investigated from the right-of-way. At that time, staff could not determine whether or not there was a violation. There was another, the case was reopened while this application was going through the process, and that one is still being looked at by staff. So we are currently out there taking a look at it. There are accessory structures on the property. There's permits for residents and a septic system on-site. There's not permits for accessory structures, but without knowing if there's utilities hooked up to those accessory structures, it's hard to determine if there's a violation there or not.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? I'm sorry, Supervisor Letman.
Just one quick follow-up question. In going through all the material, I still couldn't figure out roadway access. County roads, private roads, or a combination of the two?
Supervisor Lingefelter, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Letman. This area, there are, most of the roadways are privately maintained by the Property Owners Association. If this item were to be approved, they would have to go through the site plan process for their campground, and at that time, they would have to demonstrate that they have sufficient legal access to access the site.
To that point. The roads are public and utility easements.
Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Barelli, did you have a comment? I thought I heard you say something. No? All right, anybody else before we take the vote? We have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? Do we need to wait until the mics are up, right? To continue, right?
Hopefully, a couple more minutes.
Yeah.
Your time.
Nope, I'm not on still. You must have bionic hearing over there, Supervisor Martin. Every one of us needs one of those devices.
Do you need to test?
Can we? Okay. Everybody comfortable with that? Okay, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the vote on item number 56. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. As appear to have a due habit to order. Thank you. We're going to go to the consent now. Items number 5 through 48. Supervisor Letman, would you like to pull any items off of the consent?
I do. I would like to pull items 39, 40, 41, 43, and 47.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gould, would you like to pull any items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10, 22, and 31.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Barelli.
That pretty much does them all.
Supervisor Martin.
Well, the other guy's got them first, so.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. The microphones really weren't working. We don't know what your results are. I couldn't hear.
Motion is denied.
Denied. It was denied, consistent with the P&amp;Z Commission.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a good day. Thank you. Supervisor Martin, any items?
No, the ones I were going to pull, I got them.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Item 44 as well, on behalf of the sheriff, so we take no objection.
I'm pulling item number 44.
Sorry, sir.
For the sheriff's office at his request. So I'm looking for, let me just write it down real quick.
And item 47, so we can update the revised.
Supervisor Letman already pulled item 47.
Oh, thank you.
I'm getting there. Just be patient.
You're good. You're good. Thank you.
Trying to be thorough here. Okay, I'm looking for. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus items 10, 22, 31, 39, 40, 41, 43, 44, and 47.
So, moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. We'll move to item number 10 on consent. It's pulled by Supervisor Gould. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thought this was odd, and I needed somebody to explain it to me. It's apparently conditioned on that we rescind something.
Yeah, can you explain that, Matt?
Chairman Lingandfeltzer, Supervisor Gould, so we recently had a special use permit in this same area for a cell phone tower. It's approved by the board earlier this year, and going through that process, the applicants discovered that that site wasn't going to work for what they needed it to be. So, they found this is a separate parcel, a little ways down the road, owned by the same property owner. So, they've reapplied for a new special use permit for this site that's better for them. The Planning and Zoning Commission added the condition that the previous resolution be rescinded to prevent having two cellphone towers out there. That rescission has already been requested by the applicant and will be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission later this week.
Thank you for that explanation.
Mr. Chairman, so this would condition this approval on the board rescinding our previous decision?
Correct. The special use permit wouldn't be final until the other one is rescinded.
And since that was approved, this is not one of the ones that they're suing us over?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. We'll move to item number 22 on our consent agenda. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just looking for an explanation of our family planning program.
The family planning program. Chairman Lingandfeltzer, Supervisor Gould, this is for birth control, sexually transmitted infection testing and treatment, and well-women checks.
So, no abortion?
No abortion.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion to approve.
Heard that motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. We're going to move to item number 31 on our consent. Supervisor Gould, you pulled that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious what we do with these.
This is regarding the purchase of two LiDAR scanners, equipment, software, and training. Director Lutowski.
Yes, good morning, Chairman Lingandfeltzer, members of the board, Supervisor Gould. About a year ago, Public Works identified the funding source of federal transportation funds for the acquisition of two LiDAR scanners capable of scanning traffic crash scenes for immediate and most importantly, very accurate survey-grade data collection. It would give the entire picture of a crash scene, all the elements of the crash, from skid marks to all the dynamics. And the advantage to that is that, one, enables the sheriff's office, and this would be primarily for the sheriff's office, although there is a post-crash benefit for Public Works, a tremendous crash benefit, in the sense of we can more accurately do traffic engineering studies, better understand the dynamics of a crash. So, in essence, these purchases will be used by the sheriff's office to do their post-crash scene investigations, and we are successful in obtaining federal transportation funds to pay for 94.6% of the cost.
So, Director Lutowski, these are after the crash?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Something that they take out when they do their investigation?
Exactly. So, instead of doing the meticulous measurements with the markers, et cetera, they can simply scan the scene, get on the road, off the road as quickly as possible, as well as a lookout for the safety of the investing officer.
So, it might speed up a road closure due to an accident also?
Hundred percent, and keep them safe, yes.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard that motion, second. Any additional discussion? 39. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Eyes appear to have it, do have it. Thank you. Item number 39, that was pulled by Supervisor Letman.
Excuse me, Constable Deese is here, and come on down. I just had some questions about this amazing item. And that's no criticism of you. You're fixing the problem.
I started to say, we're in the process of fixing problems, so, but go ahead. If you want to ask a question, I can answer it.
Okay, so where has the money been deposited prior to this? So, background on this, we're talking about you collect money, we need to open up a bank account to put the money into. Where was this money before now?
So, prior to me taking office, the money has been kept either in a locked, secure drawer in the constable's office. It potentially was taken to other people's homes at the constable's office. When I took office, we realized that there was a large significant amount of money that was missing. We worked very diligently with finance and local law enforcement to get that money back. But the problem here is, is there's never been a bank account in the, excuse me, in the history of the constable's office in Bullhead City. So, you know, for transparency reasons and trustworthy reasons, what I've been doing is, so I took my, I took my safe from my home. I had the works come in. They bolted the safe to the wall. I've been securing all that money inside the safe. It never leaves the office until that money comes up to the treasurer. And once a month, I deposit that money here in the treasurer's office, and that's just, it's not sufficient. We need to, you know, be a little bit more, you know, if we had the bank account, it would allow me to, you know, show the board that we're depositing money right away within, you know, the same day, the same week. You know, also, I have problems where, if Chairman Lingandfeltzer, if you give me a check today for a service that needs to be done, I may not deposit that check for a month. And, you know, that doesn't look good, especially if you're calling my office saying, well, what happened? You know, why is it that, you know, we don't, why are you not depositing my check? It's not coming out of my account. So, there's a lot of reasons, but the biggest reason is, when we took office, we did find that there were some, you know, discrepancies with the money, and we're trying to be very transparent and do something completely, totally different.
We can't approve this fast enough. I really thank you for taking this bull by the horns, and I didn't realize we had this problem, and this obviously needs to be fixed. And I assume that our CFO has approved this, and treasurer's approved, we have a process in place to make sure that we responsibly handle our money, and this is just one more piece of that. So, I'm going to go ahead and move for approval of this item.
We have a motion for approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
Additional discussion? Supervisor Martin?
I'm curious. You say that there's money that's not accounted for?
Supervisor Martin, that money has been accounted for now. When we took office in January of 2025, we worked really hard with finance, as well as the Bullhead City Police Department's Detective Bureau. And to our knowledge, every dime of money that had been taken from our office had been recovered and is now accounted for. But this is the reason why we're wanting this bank account. You know, my office, we need to be open for transparency and integrity, and that's what we're going to be doing as long as I'm the constable for Justice Precinct III, and that way, we don't have this problem moving forward.
Well, thank you for bringing that up and making this problem public, and I'm glad to hear that you were able to account for the money when you took over that, and that there, so nobody, there's no criminal investigation or anything in regards to that recovery?
I know everything was turned over to local law enforcement. I don't believe that there's been any type of a criminal investigation that concluded out of that. I do know that we got a significant amount of money that was returned to the county, though.
Okay, thank you.
Manager Alters, this complies with the policy that the board has put into place regarding the opening of bank accounts?
Mr. Chairman, board members, yes. Finance has reviewed, has been working with the constable, and this would comply with the policy that the board recently approved.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
We're going to go to item number 40, pulled by Supervisor Letman.
So, I assume, I think I see the county attorney behind the podium. I pulled this because I wasn't sure what the JAG process was, this entire thing. This is $177,000 grant, and I started reading the 85 conditions behind...
I got it.
You got it? Behind accepting this grant. So, I was just looking for the 50,000-foot summary of what this is, and more importantly, how much does it cost us, just a ballpark guess, to comply with all of the components of this grant for $177,000? There's 85 conditions attached to it.
Welcome, Attorney Smith and Lisa.
Thank you. Chairman Lingandfeltzer, members of the board, Supervisor Letman. This grant is our Magnet grant. Magnet is our drug task force throughout Mohave County, consists of Bullhead City Police Department, Lake Havasu City Police Department, the Kingman Police Department, the Mohave County Sheriff's Office, and of course, the County Attorney's Office. We've been together in collaboration for pretty much the entire time I've been here, all 37 years. I think Magnet started within a year or two of when I started in the office, and this money is a partial, it's a federal and a state grant that comes to us every year. The amount has gotten reduced over the years. I think the max was about $234,000 that we got. Now, we're down to 177, but that is money that funds one attorney, one full-time support staff person, and three-tenths of another attorney, both salary and benefits. We have more than that that we commit to Magnet. We have three attorneys most of the time. There have been times we've had four attorneys working drug cases and multiple support staff people. We do have to make a grant match of 25% every year, which would be approximately $44,000, I don't know, $300 this year that we will have to make, which comes out of the next item that you pulled, item 41, one of the uses that we have for the RICO funds that we use. So, this is grant money that supports 2.3 employees that obviously does not have to come out of the general fund.
So, is there a compliance procedure? We got to fill out paperwork, submit it back to the feds, back to the state. Is there a process, and is it long, cumbersome, and expensive?
Lisa Samstag, our office manager, can answer that question better because she has to deal with these grants, and it's something I'm very fortunate that I don't have to do. We do have to do a grant proposal every year, so we basically just kind of cut and paste from last year, but add in some specifics on some major cases, which makes it a lot more interesting reading for whoever actually reads these grants. So, we update it with some major cases that come aboard and update the statistics every year. The attorney that's our head attorney out at Magnet, who was Rod Gillio, whose dad, Ron Gillio, is the head of the Legal Defender's Office, by the way, now it's Philip Delgado, and they supplement the information every year, and then Lisa goes over it, and then I look over it one last time and sign it. So, that's a little bit of time-intensive, but not a major deal. And as far as the rest of your question, I think Lisa can answer it better than I could.
Thank you. Chairman Lingandfeltzer, Supervisor Letman, we have to do three separate reports. We have to do monthly financial reports that take probably about 30 minutes every month, and then on a quarterly basis, we have to do a separate report for the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission that provides statistical data, as well as the Department of Justice. I fill out that information. That probably takes about 90 minutes total on a quarterly basis.
That sounds minimal to me. We obviously all support Magnet, okay, and the effort and the work that goes into it. I'm going to go ahead and move for approval of this item.
Heard a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. We'll move to item number 41, which was pulled by Supervisor Letman.
Well, you obviously answered one of the questions. This is about RICO. I think I have an understanding of what RICO is, kind of, and the first question was, where's the money going?
Chairman Lingandfeltzer, Supervisor Letman, the money is used for a variety of things. And again, Lisa could get into more specifics on some of them. The major component of the money has actually gone to the Legal Services Center, the new building that is going to house our office, legal advocate, legal defender, public defender, and our victim witness division, which is part of our office but separate. We actually gave $1 million of this money to that project a few years ago when the project was being discussed, which is now a committed, fully moving-forward project for this building. And then this past year, we put in another $200,000 out of this money. There are very restrictive uses that can be used for this money, very detailed on things that you can and you cannot do with it. We do use it for things such as advertising, legal notices, software, court costs, IT costs, a number of different things. Right now, I believe we have approximately $325,000 in there, and the source of that funding, which again is not anything that comes out of the general fund, mainly comes over the years from forfeitures from law enforcement regarding people that have drugs and money attributed to drugs in their vehicles. Unfortunately, with the change in the laws of forfeiture, the amount of forfeitures that we get has gone way down, which has made Magnet really now struggling, and I'm going into Magnet now again, in terms of maintaining viability going forward. We've been able to maintain that so far. If you have any more specific questions about the money...
Yeah, I was just curious about the $20,000 expenditure for office supplies coming out of this. I mean, I used to work for an office supply retailer. I was really curious about this.
It's not typically, sorry, Chairman Lingandfeltzer, Supervisor Letman, it's, we don't typically spend that much, but in order to be able to spend it, it needs to be budgeted. Where the $20,000 is, I would use it for things like scanners, so the general fund doesn't have to pay for it. That's in the 24620200, the county attorney's. This main state RICO is actually used to purchase office supplies for the Magnet Division. And when I say Magnet Division, I don't mean specifically. It would be the law enforcement portion of it. So, I order paper and have it delivered out to the Magnet office. We haven't come close to spending that in a very long time.
I just noticed it was a big increase year over year. Okay, that was a good answer. I'm going to go ahead and move for approval of this item.
Heard a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Smith, you spoke of changes to RICO. Have we gotten to the point where if you don't charge somebody, you have to return their money?
Actually, Chairman Lingandfeltzer, Supervisor Gould, under the law right now, we have to get a conviction a lot of times in order to keep the money or vehicles or the other thing that are typically forfeited.
Usually?
Yes.
But not always?
I think there are times, for example, I think if somebody was actually arrested and then ends up disappearing and is not around anymore, I think under those circumstances we can... Right. The other way that we get it without actually like going to trial would be a stipulation in a plea agreement from time to time.
Do you call the federals in, and then the federals keep the money?
That's not something that happens that often. We've talked about all the organizations that are part of Magnet. Unfortunately, one of them that's not is DPS, and DPS pulled out of all the task forces in the state about five, six years ago, unfortunately. And because of that, we've lost them as a working component as part of Magnet, and that has really cut down on the forfeitures. But as far as the federal involvement, we actually have a good relationship with them. Our Magnet meetings are every two months, and we have a steady attendance. We have DEA membership that work as part of the task force, ICE, and we just did an MOU with Homeland Security recently that we're working on. So, we have a good relationship with them, and they haven't been the type to swoop in and take all the money. I'm not going to tell you that's never happened all the time I've been here, though.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Attorney Smith, Lisa, thank you for your time this morning. Attorney Smith, Lisa, thank you for your time this morning. All right, so we'll go to item number 43. It was pulled by Supervisor Letman.
I'm going to have Treasurer Mello give us the 60-second summary before we tell you a great job done.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. Okay, a brief explanation. This is the final step of the 2025 tax deed sale. In order for us to sell those at the tax deed sale, we have to abate the interest and fees. And I just want to let you know, 75% of that large figure is just that, just the interest and fees. So they're back on the tax roll, future revenue. We've done almost 10,500 parcels since we restarted the tax deed sale. So we're doing a phenomenal job. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we received from public surplus an excellence award for being the top five county seller it was presented to Mojave County. So it was a great cleanup project. We continue to do it every year. And I have to mention the Clerk of the Board, she does a lot of work, her and her team, the assessor, the recorder, and of course, the Treasurer's Office. So it's a group project, but we're doing a great job.
Superb work done by everybody on this. I move for approval of this item.
A motion and a second, any additional discussion? I would second that. Kudos to all of you that are involved with this. Great job. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to inform the board that there was a period of about 10 years between the Great Recession and 2018 that the board did not foreclose on people's property. So we're lucky that the public did not find this out because they would then have no motivation to pay their taxes. And I'm not talking about kicking people out into the snow. These are vacant pieces of property.
All of it, yeah.
So it's rather ridiculous that they didn't continue the process because that money supplements the things that the county does and reduces the tax burden on the people that do pay their taxes. Thank you, sir.
Excellent point. Thank you for that.
And to that, Supervisor Gould, since they've been on the tax roll, we've collected back on the tax roll, just since we've restarted it, $750,000 so far in just property tax on a yearly basis, getting them back on the tax roll, so.
Good job. Supervisor Borelli, you had a comment?
Yeah, actually a question. Do you physically go out to these properties and inspect them?
No, they're, it's vacant land. We do go and post. Paul, this is my special projects manager, Paul Gentry. He's the one that does it, so we'll let him talk on that.
Chairman Lingenthaler, Supervisor Borelli, the only time we go out to examine the land is when the parcel resides in city limits. The statute does dictate that if the mail that we send out is returned back to us and the parcel resides in city limits, we actually have to post a physical sign on the parcel. So that's the only time we actually look at them.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered.
Good job.
We are going to move on to item number 44. Item 44, Supervisors, the sheriff asked that we poll this. There's a correction to this that they need to do. So we're going to pull item number 44. I think it's, Madam Clerk, was it just to poll or they wanted us to continue?
They asked us to pull the item. It will be back on the agenda next meeting.
Okay. So we'll move to item number 47.
Need to take a vote on that?
Do we need to take a vote? I don't think we need to take a vote on that, no. Yeah, no action, right? Yeah. Item number 47 was pulled by Supervisor Letman.
Since we have Director Ursonbach at the Mojave County Airport Authority meeting, I'd like to continue this item until the meeting of July 21st.
Second.
Manager Elters.
Mr. Chairman. Director Ursonbach is attending the Mojave County Airport Authority at my direction. With that said, I asked her to provide some information to me regarding this item. I can do my best to answer the questions so we can move this item forward. It really does need action from the board, if I may ask you to keep it.
Let's go. We were also on this item requested to add verbiage and to accept the revised budget. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
This is complicated.
So go ahead, Supervisor Andrew Elters.
Well, I'll do my best. And if you still, if you feel like you, if there are questions that I can't answer, then we can certainly table it. This item is part of a multi-year grant. Within the third year, it, the first year was 2023 and 2024. Those years were intended to identify the need and validate those needs. That has been completed. This third year is the year to implement a training solution. It does serve five counties, Mojave, Coconino, Apache, Navajo, and Yavapai, these are the northern counties. With Mojave being the lead, it's really intended to provide the resources necessary for business retention and expansion and with specific goals of helping local employers upskill, to upskill or to reskill their current workforce, and then offering other specific training such as manufacturing, electrical facilities, facility maintenance, commercial HVAC plumbing, and so on. Those are just some of the highlights. I did, I do not have any specific numbers related to the budget, but this is all grant. So I'm more than happy to stand down. And if you wish to table it, I understand. I was under the impression that she was asking this to be approved this time, Mr. Chairman, so we can proceed with the implementation of it.
Understood. I'd open it up to the board.
What's the rush on approving this?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Letman, simply it's the third year and they're, we're in the implementation phase. And I just understand from the grant that there is a desire to move forward with the execution of those tasks. Again, if you do not feel comfortable, clearly, I don't have all the answers to the questions. So if you wish to table it, I understand, and I think she would too.
I'd like to table it.
This grant consistent with fiscal year?
Mr. Chairman, board members, I sincerely do not know that specifically, and I would hate to misrepresent an answer to you.
Well, we have a second. Motion and second to table the grant? Any additional discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. We will go back into our public hearings now. I'm going to open up the public hearing for item number 50. Discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-114, an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan for a suburban development area land use designation to a commercial recreation land use designation and a rezone from an AR 27A zone to a CRE, Commercial Recreation Zone, to allow for an RV park for Assessor's Parcel Number 22420027 in the Mojave Valley vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have no one signed to speak. Is there anyone in the audience?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, item number 50. Would you like to speak? Go ahead and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Lynn Robison, representing the applicant, P.O. Box 2587 in Bullhead City. Just a brief description of the project. The plan is a five-star RV resort. It will be a gated, a gated resort. It'll be open approximately eight months a year in that it gets pretty warm in Mojave Valley. And typically, our summertime is not our market. The target market is Class A coaches, which oftentimes exceed $1 million. They usually measure 40 feet, and they usually pull a trailer or a vehicle. So we will have spaces between 40 and 80 feet, many with pull-through access. The estimate with it, depending on the layout, will be somewhere around 220 to 240 spaces. We will have an onsite office, clubhouse, and a pool. The utilities that are already to the site are electric, sewer, water, and there is a county, a wonderful county, maintained facility park right next door. We will provide a 25-foot buffer from the residential community to the north. The access will be, our website will direct the access off of Interstate 40 through Needles to Courtrite, and will be removed from any of the residential accesses. The resort rules will go, are very specific. And we will be vetting those people. A reservation will be required. There will be certain vehicles that will not be allowed in the resort. The schoolies, the home-built, they will not be allowed. There will be a very specific quiet time, 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. There will be 24-hour security. We have, there will be enlarged spaces in that. That's our target market, bigger than Mojave County requirements. We have all those utilities to the site. If you have any questions regarding the power, the water, I'll be happy to answer those. We have a significant contribution. It will be in excess of $4 million to build the park. And we believe it will contribute significantly to the economic growth and development of South Mojave Valley. With that, we request the Board of Supervisors approve the zoning.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item number 50? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. It's the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
With that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered, thank you. Item number 51, we're going to open the public hearing on item number 51. Discussion and possible action, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-115, an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan for a suburban development land use designation to a general commercial land use designation and a rezone from an AR 3A, agricultural residential, three-acre minimum lot-sized zone to a CMO, Commercial Manufacturing Open Lot Storage Zone, to allow for covered and open lot storage for Assessor's Parcel 2024-20-28 in the Mojave Valley vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by eight to two vote. We have no one signed up for item number 51. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item 51? Item number 51?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Lynn Robison, again for the applicant. This will be simply a complement to the RV resort next door. There are those who don't want to drive their rigs back to Wisconsin. This will include indoor, covered, and a small amount of open storage. We will include bathrooms and RV and boat wash station within the storage facility. Again, this is contributing to the economic growth of South Mojave Valley. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item number 51? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. It's the pleasure of the board, Supervisor Martin.
I'd like to have Matt come up here and explain if he knows, what was the objection of the two commissioners?
Development Services is going to speak for now. So if we have any other questions for you, sir, we'll call you back up.
Yeah, Chairman Lingenthaler, Supervisor Martin, there was discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, excuse me, about open lot storage not fitting in the area. So there was some discussion on that. And again, I can't speak for the commissioners that opposed. They didn't specifically specify why they didn't. But that was the general discussion that occurred at the meeting. It was just that the storage of vehicles didn't fit with the residential, the residential aspect of the RV park, just that we just heard the item before and then the subdivision to the north.
Okay, thank you.
It's the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
With that motion, do I have a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered, thank you. We'll move to the public hearing on item number 52. Discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-116, an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a low-density residential land use designation to a heavy industrial land use designation and a rezone from an SDR, Special Development Cemetery Zone, to an MX, Heavy Manufacturing Zone, to allow for a part-time aggregate pit for Assessor's Parcel Number 2024-06-002 in the Mojave Valley vicinity, Fort Mojave, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have no one signed up to speak. Did you want to speak on item number 52?
Yes, sir. Lynn Robison, again, representing the applicant, Mr. Chairman and Board. And this was a farm pit. This was, belonged to the Chip Sherrill family and been a farm pit for more than 50 years. We couldn't understand why it was zoned for cemetery. But your staff found a resolution recorded in 1967. This is to complement the aggregate pit, or the gravel pit over on Laguna Road. It's about three-quarters of miles south. There will be no daily use. This is not, no office. It's not open to the public. This will simply be a support pit for the gravel pit. There are stockpiles on site that we expect will last for several years, and it entails more rock than other parts of Mojave Valley. This will simply be a transportation of pit used and that material will be transported to the gravel pit over on Laguna Road. So this is a part-time. An estimate, four or five times a year, we'll be in there processing rock and material from time to time as needed. And we request approval. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else during public hearing that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 52. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. With that motion and second, any additional discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered, thank you. We're going to open the public hearing on item number 53. Discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-117, an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a suburban development area land use designation to a general commercial land use designation and a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 206-26-113 from an AR, agricultural residential zone, to a C2, general commercial zone, to allow for a multifamily development in the Golden Valley vicinity. We have one person that has signed up to speak during public hearing, Shannon White. Would you like to come up to the podium? State your name and your address, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. And speaking to the microphone, thank you.
My name is Shannon White. I live at 2859 West Malibu in Golden Valley. So this is Walnut Creek Estate. It's set up for one-acre lot. That is why I purchased, yep, one home on one acre. It's predominantly owner-occupied, very few rentals or non-owner-occupied homes. And this particular project would affect me directly. I'm directly across the street from it, where I assume the driveways would be of these multifamilies would shine directly into my backyard where my horses are. It's going to bring in, yeah, tenants, which are not rural community usually. And that's my objection. It's going to bring, it's going to change the neighborhood. It goes against everything that is zoned for one house on one acre. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item number 53 during public comment, during the public hearing? You did. State your name and address for the record, thank you.
Yes, Lyman Watson, 2001 Rex Allen Drive in Kingman, Arizona. I'm the applicant. I understand the concerns. We had this, discussed this kind of briefly at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Purchased this property in 1993 with the intention of building duplexes. And the reason I did purchase it is because the parcel right next to it has four existing duplexes on it. Financial concerns, it was supposed to be completed by now. This is going to be my retirement project, but now it's going to be a retirement project possibly for my son or my grandchildren. The project- The project itself, as I presented at the, at the Planning and Zone, Zoning Commission, is going to be consistent with the neighborhood. I wanted to present this picture of a finalized project. It's going to be very similar to this. These will be new construction. There will be an addition to the neighborhood. We are limited by the septic requirements, so there's not going to be twenty or forty units here. Most likely, this has to be concluded with the Development Services who have been a great assistance to me. We're going to be able to put possibly four units per acre. The septics are going to be the limitation, so there's not going to be multi-story thirty-six, forty-six units. This is going to be mostly a residential construction. So it's going to be very similar to building three or four separate homes. The traffic concerns, the property values, all of those things are going to be the same as they are now. Actually, I would think they'd be improved because this is going to be a new structure. Those duplexes that I mentioned, I can show you a map where they're located. It's adjacent to that. Those duplexes have been in existence since nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one. As I said, that was my reason for purchasing the property was to build duplexes on this parcel. The water concerns that were addressed, that's not an issue. Walnut Creek has four wells servicing it. Again, it's going to be a small footprint multifamily because they're duplexes, but it's not going to be a large apartment complex. We were hoping to address the need for more multifamily structures and available rentals for Mojave County. Again, I hope this would be an addition, and I plan on maintaining this property to pass on to my son and my grandchildren. Any questions?
After we close the public hearing, if we have any questions, we'll call you back. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on item number fifty-three? State your name and address when you get to the podium, please. Not everybody knows your name.
Chairman and Supervisors, my name's Philip Robinson, Golden Valley. I'm, I can't believe that planning zoning still denies what we want out in Golden Valley. We don't want duplexes. We don't want apartment buildings. We want one-acre lots like we've been complaining about for the past ten years. None of you have been on the board long enough to know this. The county manager should know. He's been on it for a long time. You know? It's getting ridiculous that these people keep coming out to Golden Valley wanting to build out there, and how can it be affordable housing or rent rents all the way up to two thousand dollars? This is getting ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number fifty-three. I did not read into the record that the commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. What is the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Martin.
Can I have Lyman come back up?
Yeah. The applicant?
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Watson, can you, can you tell me how many units you're anticipating to build there?
Our, our goal is to have what's going to end up being eight bedrooms per acre. That is going to have to be fit with the septic approval, so if that makes sense.
So, but, so it'll depend on what the county says the septic system can hold.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Where exactly is this located? Is it on Oatman Road or just off or? I think I know, but I don't know if the other commissioners know.
If that map gets brought up, you'll see that there's a red arrow here is to my property, and that other red arrow was to the existing four duplexes. So it's right off of Oatman Road.
So essentially, it's, it's, it's not inland. It's pretty close or just almost on to Oatman Road.
No, sir. It's actually a frontage, seven hundred and sixty feet of frontage on Oatman Road.
Okay. That's what I need to know.
I have a follow-up question.
Supervisor Letman.
So I still didn't understand, how many units are you building? How many front doors?
Because this proposed structure is actually a one-bedroom unit, there'll be four, if this is approved with the septic, there will be eight bedrooms, so four units per acre. It's like thirteen hundred square foot on a roof. They're very small. The market, believe it or not, seems to be people really desiring smaller footprint properties. What's apparent in Kingman is not always is it families coming into town. A lot of times, it's people that are coming in for work and they can't find affordable housing. So this is a one-bedroom, one-bedroom, so it'd be two bedrooms per unit. Does that make sense?
No.
Sorry.
How many front doors? Put a key on the, on the, how many people, residences are these?
There'll be eight, eight front doors.
Thank you.
Per acre, sorry. Eight bedrooms.
What's, Supervisor Gould, excuse me?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, why C two zoning?
When we were going through the process to working with planning and zoning to, or I'm sorry, with the Development Services, it was actually recommended to go with the C two zoning. We actually rezoned this once in two thousand and seven. I did this once before, but the market declined right as I got the approval. It was my intention at that time to build two-bedroom units. Even at that time, it was recommended to do the C two. To be honest with you, I'm not sure the exact reasoning is either multifamily or C two. C two was the one I was recommended to pursue.
Should be able to tell us.
Chairman Linganfelter, Supervisor Gould, so in looking at the zoning and land uses in the area, there's not a lot of multifamily residential zoning or multifamily land use designations in the general plan. There is existing commercial and commercial land use designations in the area, and both of those would allow for this type of development. So we were going with the zoning and the land use designations that fit the area, and that would still allow for what they were looking to do.
Don't we have a, an R three and R four zone?
We, we don't have those specific designations. We do have an R M., which is multifamily residential, which would allow for single-family residences up to apartment complexes, but that zoning isn't in this specific area off of Oatman Road, but the C two is, which also allows for that same type of development.
My concern is that he changed his mind. He's telling us today he wants to build duplexes, but he theoretically changed his mind and do anything that C two allows him to do if we give him the C two designation.
That would be, that is a possibility there. The thought from a staff perspective being that if you rezone to R M., he could also go turn from doing duplexes to doing a large multi-story apartment complex. So some of that still exists in, in both zonings.
Might need some work on our zone classifications then. Perhaps. Thank you, sir.
You could also put a specific condition limiting future uses if you wanted to. Did you have a comment, Supervisor Martin?
Yes, sir. I know this guy, and if he says he's going to do it this way, he's going to do it this way. And, and I understand that there's always, you know, but I think a lot of times we have to look at the applicant, look at their background and, and, you know, make a call. I can say, I, I have no concerns whatsoever that what he's saying he's going to build, he's going to build, but we'll add that restriction on there if you guys think that this, it's needed in this situation, that, that's what he's got to build.
Supervisor Burley.
Yes, I concur, but we also have to remember, what if the next guy comes in and wants to change it? In other words, he sells the property and it's already zoned that way. I think we should put those guardrails on this.
I would ask Mr. Watson, do you have a problem with that?
Oh, no, sir. Like I said, my, my intention is to build duplexes. It did change originally. It was very similar to the ones that aren't existent. Now I'm going kind of smaller because that seems to be a need.
And I, and I, I agree with that. I think there are needs there, but also Mr. Robinson addressed what the Golden Valley people say is, hey, we want one acre. This is on Oatman Road, right on Oatman Road. So it's not like it's inland and we're, we're doing like a spot zoning and say, okay, go ahead, put them in. This is right out there on Oatman Road and one acre or these smaller units will definitely be attractive to people that don't need a big multifamily thing. So I, I'd make the motion that we approve.
All right. Motion second, any additional discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Bernie Davis.
Wanted to point out, as the motion currently stands, there are no conditions other than the standard condition.
Thank you.
If it's the pleasure of the board to add those conditions, I would have no problem with that.
Supervisor Gould.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that we add the conditions.
Are you amenable to that?
I'm amenable.
Want to withdraw your second so that he can?
I second that.
Could you remove your second so he can?
I didn't hear you.
You need to remove your second so he can amend his motion.
Yes.
Okay. And you amend your motion to?
Yes, that to include the restriction as stated.
Okay. Does that make sense? And then do you second that?
Let's state the restriction.
Can you read that back into the record, Madam Clerk?
Limited to residential use.
I was going to say, there hasn't been any stated conditions.
Okay, what is the stated condition? Supervisor Martin.
Supervisor Gould?
Limited to residential use.
No more than, actually, it's no more than four units per acre. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the only thing I will say with that is, that is depending on the septic approval, but that's what we were initially told that's what we should be able to.
I think you're covered. There's a lot that gets figured out during the site planning process after the zoning is, is approved. So if you just make sure that it's, if the guardrails are residential only, then.
Mr. Chairman, just to read it clearly, I can state the motion and then that can be incorporated. I would accept the condition just so it's clearly stated. So the condition would be to make the zone residential, limited to residential uses no larger than four units per acre.
That's what you're looking for?
That's what I'm looking for. Are you okay with that?
Or duplexes per acre pending the approval of the septic. Yes, sir, that'd be fine.
I think that's incorporated. That's, yeah.
Okay. That's my motion.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Supervisor Letman? We're going to take the vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. Item number fifty-four, we're going to open the public hearing on item number fifty-four. Approve or deny the adoption of B O S. Resolution twenty-twenty-five one eighteen or is a rezone of assessors parcel number three oh six two twenty-four one seventy-six A. from an A R ten zone to an S D C, Special Development Commercial Zone, to allow for open lot, R V. and boat storage in the Golden Valley vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended denial by unanimous vote. We have nobody signed up in, in the meeting. However, I think, Madam Clerk, did you say that we had applicant on teams? Does they, do they wish to speak?
We do. We have the applicant online.
They want to have three minutes?
What he's asking for is for it to be continued, so let's see if I can bring him, or if he can hear me, if he can bring himself up. I see him online, but he is, he's muted.
Is he, is he looking for a continuation?
Yes, he's looking for a continuation to the August meeting. He has a medic, or his family is experiencing a medical emergency at this time.
So he's looking for a continuation to the first meeting in August?
Correct.
Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Supervisor Martin, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I think I first need to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. Item number fifty-five, we're going to open the public hearing on item number fifty-five. Approve the adoption of B O S. Resolution twenty-twenty-five one nineteen, a rezone of assessors parcel number three zero six fourteen zero zero one E. from an A R four A agricultural residential four-acre minimum lot sized zone to an A R agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have no one signed up to speak on item number fifty-five. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number fifty-five? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Martin, this is your district.
Motion to approve.
For that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. We've already done item number fifty-six. Item number fifty-seven, we're going to open the public hearing, discussion of possible action, approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance number twenty-twenty-five oh one, prohibiting engine braking on Interstate fifteen, departure off ramps, only within the unincorporated area of Mojave County, Arizona. We have no one signed up to speak on item number fifty-seven. Anybody wishing to speak on item number fifty-seven? I'm going to close the public hearing, seeing none. Director Lotoski, do you want to come up?
And again, this is, I believe, only exit eight and nine on Interstate fifteen, only Interstate eight and nine, or exit eight and nine.
Chairman Linganfelter, members of the board, they do have an exhibit to show, and as you stated, Chairman Linganfelter, that is practice ordinance will only pertain to Interstate fifteen and the off ramps on exit eight and exit nine. If the exhibit can be brought up, perfect. This is a snapshot of exit eight. What really stands out is on the southbound Interstate fifteen ramp, that's in the upper right, upper right corner, that is a off ramp close to the Beaver Dam Estates community. It's only one thousand two hundred and fifty feet long. Now that is ample, ample distance to stop a truck. A truck can stop a heavy vehicle in about four to five hundred feet. However, when ramps like this get congested, and that can happen, in fact, this Google screenshot kind of shows a little bit of congestion, trucks rolling in at a rather lower rate of speed tend to use their engine brakes, and I think that's probably what's happening here. So it would be my recommendation, at least at this point, that I do see merit in that southbound Interstate fifteen off ramp at exit eight for no engine.
I'll also mention, I think I asked the clerk of the board to send it to the full board, that the Beaver Dam Property Owners Association did reach out and ask for this to be, to be put into place with all of the, the big travel centers that are going up in that area. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, I would make a motion to approve item number fifty-seven.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. Item number fifty-eight, we're going to open the public hearing, discussion of possible action, approve the adoption of an amendment to the twenty-twenty-five Mojave County Parks and Mojave County Fairgrounds fee schedule to permit a maximum one dollar per ticket convenience charge as third-party vendor fee for the provision of Mojave County Fair ticketing through new digital ticketing platform for fair patron ticket purchases. We have no one signed up for item number fifty-eight. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item number fifty-eight? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Martin.
I have a question. How much is a ticket?
Come on up, Steve.
Chairman Linganfelter, Supervisor Martin, a ticket for a, for an adult to the Mojave County Fair is ten dollars. There's a reduced price of five dollars for youth, as well as, I believe, veterans and senior citizens.
So seniors get a discount on this?
Yes, five dollars. It's a five dollars.
So if we approve this, it'd go up six dollars?
That's a great question. So the important thing to note with this online ticketing system, there's a, a surcharge of ten percent on, on ticket sale, but a minimum of seventy-five cents. So it'll be five dollars and seventy-five cents for that discounted ticket. It would be eleven dollars for the general adult.
So is that, is that going to apply to people that just roll up to the fair and buy a ticket?
At a reduced price, yes. Chairman Linganfelter, it'll be a thirty-five cent charge. At a reduced price, yes. Chairman Lingefelter, it'll be a 35 cent charge for those that buy at the ticket window. We're going to anticipate having a kiosk available for persons, but they'll be able to walk up and actually buy a ticket as well. But it would be a 35 cent surcharge because we're using this online system.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's 35 cents if they use the kiosk, or 35 cents if they use the ticket shack?
The ticket shack, yes.
So we're raising it 35 cents there also?
Exactly. And that's for the purpose, Supervisor Gould, because we're integrating this ticketing into a master software system. So it's not only online ticketing, that's a huge benefit, but also an actual master ticketing system will exist by which these surcharges apply to every single ticket, just at various amounts.
Interesting.
What's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion. Motion second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it sorted. Thank you. We're going to move to the public hearing, our last public hearing today, thank goodness, item number 59. Open public hearing, discussion of possible action, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-101, approving the extinguishment of a public utility easement for Lomanco Incorporated, lying within limits of APN 310-19240, being 30 foot wide by approximately 457.4 feet long, containing .32 acres, more or less, and a, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, and further being a portion of a public utility easement filed as Book 706, page 820 of Mojave County Records. We have nobody signed up for item number 59. Is there anybody wishing to speak during public comment during item number 59? Thank you. State your name and address. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman and fellow members of the board, I'm Greg Fritz, so I'm with Seaberry Fritz Architects. So we're going to be the architect of record and representing Lomanco here today. And I don't have any presentation. I just wanted to make you all aware, I'm here to answer any kind of questions that come up. So just a brief intro to the project, it's going to be out in the Kingman Airport, the south intersection of Interstate Way and Mojave Airport. So the plan is to expand the existing operation there. And this particular easement happens to lie under what we hope to expand the warehousing and manufacturing areas. So we went through the process of getting approval with the City of Kingman. We've recorded the documents for the easement and the extinguishment of the easement. And so we're just seeking approval for that extinguishment.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I do want to start off by saying thank you for being here and thank you to Lomanco. They've been in the Kingman Airport Industrial Park for many, many years and very, very pleased to be seeing that they are choosing to expand here in Mojave County. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it sorted. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, regular agenda. It looks like item 60 rescinded by applicant. The appeal was rescinded by the applicant. So we're going to move to item number 61. Discussion of possible action, approve the adoption of fiscal year 26 to 2030, five-year capital improvement road program for completion of capital improvement transportation projects as county and/or supporting federal or state funding is available. Director Lutowski.
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, this item really segues from my presentation earlier. Our focus with the use of county here funds is for operation and maintenance of our county highway network. However, every year we do present a five-year capital improvement road program. This program, as has been in years past, our practices largely present the same projects and carry them over from year to year when they cannot be accomplished. This is a fiscally unconstrained program. It relies largely on federal and/or state funds. However, some notable changes are, as we've shown in the program, all the projects highlighted in green are projects that we've successfully obtained or at least have pending commitment for federal transportation dollars. So they're shown with county investment is really just pennies on the dollar. And we were able to put in about $2 million additional federal projects in both this and the next fiscal year. Some removals from the road program include some self-stabilization projects that have been on the program for some years. But in taking a second look at them, they really do not have an inherent need. These include Bolsa Drive, Verde Road, as well as Kelly Dell Media. But most of the other projects, we have Mountain View Road, for example, on there, as well as Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, they've been longstanding projects. We just need to find a funding source. But the nice thing about having this on a five-year program is it at least shows with the board's approval, an interest, an ongoing interest.
Thank you for that, Director Lutowski. Any questions for Steve?
I do. I had two quick questions. Senator Angus gave us an update today on some additional funding coming through from the state. I assume that will be reflected in this document at a later date.
Yes, Supervisor Lingefelter, we do have programmed in FY '28, the Mountain View Road project at a total amount of $14 million. And that does reflect the design component, which is new funding, which we're really excited about.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lutman, the corridor, Mountain View that Steve just spoke of, the $14 million, that is seven miles long, that will complete Mountain View as a parallel route to SR95. I think with this, with this $1 million, what will happen is it will go toward a segment, then we'll have a logical termini, because obviously $1 million isn't going to build the seven mile, but we will take it as far as we can.
Just had a quick question on Mountain View, just for information only. Does that project require the cooperation of the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe?
Supervisor Lutman, there will be some level of right-of-way acquisition, and we will have to look to the tribe for partnership in that regard.
Director Lutowski, we do not yet own the rights of way in that area as it stands.
Supervisor Gould, the right-of-way is not perfected throughout the entire corridor. There are areas where there is right-of-way, but it's not perfect.
Sure, thank you. Questions from the board? Further questions? Hearing none, I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Supervisor Gould, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it sorted. Thank you very much. Item number 62, discussion of possible action, write a file to procurement director's signature of, quote, 3126, excuse me, 3162678, an issuance of a purchase order using Sourcewell Cooperative Contract, Public Safety Communication Technology and Hardware Solutions awarded to Motorola Solutions Incorporated, Chicago, Illinois, for the purchase of 50 radios and a one-year service subscription. Tara, do you want to come up to the podium and just give a little overview?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman. So essentially, I did inform all of the board members prior to approving this purchase, recognizing that I approved a purchase outside of my normal authority is not something that I would regularly do. When the board approved the budget on June 16th, the sheriff reached out to me and informed me that he had a, quote, to purchase 50 radios and the associated software, and that we were going to make that purchase regardless, recognizing that it was approximately half a million dollars. It would normally require board approval, but if we waited until this meeting to make the purchase, we were looking at potentially a 10% cost increase. And so after consultation with the county manager and the sheriff's office, and recognizing that they do have budgeted funds using Prop 207 funds, we went ahead and moved forward with the purchase. This is a contract the board previously approved using ARPA funding to purchase approximately 50 radios. It's almost the exact same quote, but now using the Prop 207 funds. So we move forward to be able to secure the purchase without unnecessarily needing to spend an additional $50,000.
Appreciate that overview, Tara. Thank you. Any questions on item number 62?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
So Director Acton, you didn't contact the chairman, as I suggested?
I did contact the chairman after you suggested that, yes.
Did the chairman approve the purchase?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. That wasn't clear in your statement.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I did notify each board member in being mindful of open meeting laws. I didn't want to take specific feedback. But after receiving feedback from you, I did contact the chairman. The chairman isn't necessarily approving on behalf of the whole board, and so I wanted to bring this before the board, for the entire board to consider it, but it was done in consultation with the chairman as well.
It is recognized that the protocol was followed, so that's good.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Do I have a motion on item number 62?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it sorted. Thank you very much. Item number 63, clerk of the board, update on board supervisors regarding the reception of the Mojave County Airport Authority's financial audits for 2024 and the request to grant Mojave County representative a seat on the MCAA Board of Directors.
I wanted to let you know that as of now, we have not received the audited financial audits for 2024 and that they had a meeting today, the Mojave County Airport Authority. On their agenda, they did not have any requests to grant the Mojave County request to have a representative seat on the MCAA Board of Directors.
All right. Thank you. That was for information only. Supervisor Lutman?
So if I understand this correctly, I'm going to make sure I got this right. So our board has passed three resolutions. The first one was a presentation to be made by the airport authority. That was, did not happen. We had a second resolution requesting the audited financials. That hasn't happened for the year 2024, and I have a report from my admin. She attended the quarterly meeting, and I asked about where the financial reports there. Quote, "Financial report's not ready. The accountant has been ill." Then we had a third one, which was to have a member of our staff become a voting member of their board. And as I understand it, that has been thoroughly rebuffed, if I understand your report correct today. Well, this supervisor is getting fed up with the Mojave County Airport Authority's board. And if we don't see some change in direction on this, I will come back at the next meeting, and there will be several motions regarding the operation of that board, and I'll just keep it at that. And I'll wait to see what happens, then I'll make my, put my items on the agenda for the next meeting.
Great. That was, 63 was for information only. We'll move to item 64. Do we, this was spoken about in executive session. Do we need to have a motion?
If the board wishes us to, wishes the county attorney's office to move in any way that it wished in executive session, that would require a motion.
I'll try and do this as well as Supervisor Gould does it. So I'm going to go ahead and move that the board act in conjunction with the recommendations made by staff at this morning's executive session, and that the county attorney's office proceed as directed.
Thank you for that motion. And that's second. Any additional, no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it sorted. Thank you very much. Item number 65, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution number 2025123, inviting Secretary of the Interior Doug Burgum to Mojave County to commemorate the 75th anniversary of power generation at Davis Dam and attend an intergovernmental summit of local leaders to discuss regional land and water use issues. Supervisor Lutman?
So we have a resolution out there supporting the request to have Secretary Burgum come visit during a recent meeting with the Bureau of Reclamation Staff. We have a decent chance of this happening. And on January 8th of next year will be the 75th anniversary of flipping the switch to start power generation at unit number two, 75 years ago, by the then-Secretary of the Interior. We'd like to have him come out and do that again, 75 years later. But that's kind of a hook, okay? The real reason we want him out here, of course, is to have a meeting with governmental leaders throughout the region to talk about issues that are relevant to this board, the boards of adjacent counties, and other jurisdictions within this area. That's the purpose of the resolution, and I would ask for your support, and I would move that it be approved.
Very good. Thank you for that. Thank you for bringing that on the agenda. Any additional discussion? Or a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you very much. 66, discussion of possible action, approve retaining two vehicles from the county's fleet before going to auction for the Mojave County Treasurer and Mojave County Recorder. Supervisor Barelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And members, it came to my attention that the two elected officials need a county vehicle, so they're not using their own personal vehicle. And I was wondering if there's an option that we could use vehicles that are going to be auctioned off, if we could just shift those over to them in their department, and that, and I believe that both their budgets will actually support maintenance and of this. So I'm just looking for options to basically reutilize or repurpose vehicles instead of them going to auction, okay, going to be shifted over to those departments.
Thank you for that. Any, I'd open it up to the board, or county manager, or Supervisor Gould? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I might be wrong, but I believe that we get rid of these vehicles for a reason. And I believe the reason is they're worn out and they have increased maintenance costs. So I don't know that this is really the proper way to do this. This is kind of just a two-step to getting them new cars in the near future. And if we're going to do that, you need to amend the rules on who can have a car. Because the ordinance spells out who's available, who actually has the ability to have a car. Thank you.
I have a question for either yourself, Madam Elters, or perhaps Steve. I know that the county has a policy. The last I remember seeing the fleet policy was, it was on maybe a five or six-year rotating basis. And then if a vehicle hit a certain number of service miles, then it would be retired and replaced. Can somebody let us know what the, what's, the vehicles that we're talking about right now? I mean, what are the parameters that we're working under right now?
The, we do have a policy, Mr. Chairman and board members. The policy is for, really the purpose of ensuring that county vehicles are safe to drive and optimized maintenance costs. So it's 100,000 or 120,000, depending on the nature of the vehicle. We turn it over and then we go with a newer vehicle, because then again, it's a matter of safety and cost of maintenance. Steve can give you the total breakdown or the details. Retaining those in the fleet would be outside of the guidance that, of the policy that the board approved. And it would, it would perhaps undermine the liability aspect of those vehicles. Again, the policy is in place for a reason. You know, we, not to rehash what was discussed not long ago, several, probably few board meetings ago, when this request came up. The request came through, staff provided information to you, the board, when you made a decision. And that decision was, there are pool vehicles available for use as needed by each department, as long as the use cost falls well below what it would cost to assign a vehicle if and when the use of each of those departments or any other department rises to the point that it justifies assigning a vehicle, a newer vehicle that meets the policy that the board approved would be assigned at that time. So I, I, I don't really recommend retaining these vehicles and handing them to these departments or any other departments, because we to these departments or any other departments because we would be violating our own policy, the policy that the board has approved. If there's a need and the board feels like it just, it does justify, we would do what Supervisor Gould alluded to. We would have to change the allocation of those vehicle assignments to ensure that new assignments are approved by the board, and then we would make we would assign vehicles that meet the requirements of the policy going forward.
Further discussion. Supervisor Martin.
So Sam, if I understand what you're saying is we currently have a policy in place that we don't keep these cars. And also, my question is, is there any stipulation anywhere in our regulations that says the treasurer and the recorder, whoever, ought to sign the car?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Martin. You asked a two-part question. The answer to your, to the first part of the question is, yes, we do have a policy, and again, it, it states when we turn vehicles over, and if we were to retain these vehicles and assign them to the departments, we would have two-tier system. We would be assigning vehicles to these departments that are, we're saying should be disposed of. As far as any constraints or, or limitation, there really isn't any. It's up to the board. The board has in the past considered and approved specific assignments that are part of what we do today. The board can expand this list. When asked in the past, staff's response has been the, the list that is in place currently is based on use and merit. So these two departments and other departments with perhaps similar, similar need have not warranted or justified that assignment, and we, staff has said to the board, we will meet the need of these two departments and any others through the motor pool. And in the future, when, you know, based on the cost, again, the cost justification, when the, when the, when they use merit a special assignment, we would come to the board, the, we would present it, the board would approve it, and then we would proceed with it.
So has there ever been a position where one of these departments has needed a fleet vehicle and one was not available?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I think I'm going to defer to Steve on that. I'm not aware. What Steve and the, the motor pool department has done is to staff or to provide adequate vehicles to meet the need. Is there a situation where once a vehicle was not available? I honestly don't know of one, but I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Director Lutowski, can you answer that question for me?
Yes, Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, there has not been a case, to my knowledge, that of the number of vehicles we have in our daily carpool, motor pool, car rental fleet, that a car was not available. There may have been an instance maybe where a particular type of car, like a passenger sedan, was not available, but we would have to make like an SUV available, but we have a good number of rental car vehicles available in our motor pool fleet, and there's always a vehicle available.
So, right now, what is the current GSA-approved reimbursement rate per mile? Is it 70 cents?
I think it's 70 cents.
70 cents. So in my mind, you take all of the folks during a fiscal year that in your department that need to travel for official county business, and you, you log all those miles together, then you times that by point 70, 70 cents, that's going to give you a figure, right? So you take that figure and you compare it to how much it would take, how much it would cost the county as an organization to provide a vehicle with maintenance and all those things over a five-year period or whatever, and whichever cost is lower to the organization, that would seem logical to me. Do we have any data as far as the mileage from all of the staff members in these departments that need to travel for official county business during a year? Do we have any of that data to make those calculations right now?
Mr. Chairman, Board members.
I'm just trying to make sense of this in my.
Oh, sure, sure. I, I would like to have Luke Maury and our Chief Financial Officer jump in. I don't know whether we have it for every department, but we have looked at it for these two specific departments that are on the agenda today because we've had this discussion before, and I know Luke has those numbers. Luke, would you jump in and provide answers to the question from Chairman Lingefelter, please?
Certainly, County Manager. Chairman Lingefelter, Board members, I did look at the Recorder's Department specifically. They, they incurred more miles than, than the Treasurer's Department last year, so fiscal 2025, looking at the Recorder and the voter registration divisions, we have about 5,400 miles, give or take, and that is based on the reimbursement claims for use of personal vehicles as well as what I can see for travel claims that use a motor pool vehicle. And so when you total up the mileage reimbursements for use of personal vehicles as well as the motor pool charges for when the department utilized a motor pool vehicle, you have about $4,500 in charges altogether. When we look at what's being proposed today and speaking with Director Lutowski, you know, there would be a $150 a month charge, and that is essentially to, to account for depreciation on the vehicles. These vehicles that, that were going to be sent to auction, as has been discussed, you know, they're past the optimal useful service life, but Public Works does, does feel that, you know, if the department is, is paying the full cost of repairs, maintenance, fuel, et cetera, then that $150 monthly fee covers the depreciation on the vehicle, and they likely, you know, would, would last another two years or so before they become unreliable. But when we look at the, the overall cost, you know, the estimate of what those repair and fuel costs would be on an annual basis in addition to the $150 a month, which is $1,800 a year, and then based on the miles that the recorder was driving, if FY26 has similar miles, this would cost about $1,000 more. And so not exactly the most cost-effective solution. It's certainly less expensive than a full-on, normal assigned vehicle. The county doesn't typically assign vehicles to departments unless they're incurring at least 12,000 miles of driving each year. That's the point where it generally becomes more cost-effective to provide a, a assigned vehicle that is, you know, the department pays the, the fees that Public Works has come up with to cover the full cost of all the, all the maintenance and everything like that.
So 12,000 miles is the, is the magic number?
That is typically the magic number. What's being proposed today is a little bit different because it's an extended service vehicle, and so it's not, it's not subject to the, the operation and maintenance fixed rate. It just has a reduced replacement use speed of $150 a month or $1,800 a year, and then the department would be on the hook to pay out of the department's budget any fuel costs, any repair charges, any maintenance, anything like that would come out of the department's budget on a, basically on, on an actual cost basis rather than the established monthly fee that Public Works has, has established.
Thank you. Additional discussion?
I have a question for, for Luke. Luke, in your opinion, what is being proposed today, is that cost-effective for the county?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Martin, as I stated, for the, for the Recorder's Office, if they incur similar mileage in FY26 that they, as to what they incurred in fiscal 25, which is about 5,500 miles, then it would end up costing the county about $1,000 more to proceed with, with what is being proposed today.
Okay, and this is for the recorder. What about the treasurer?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Martin, I did not do a deep dive on the treasurer's mileage, but as I said, the Recorder's Office certainly incurs more miles on an annual basis than the treasurer because of the nature of their business, especially when there's an election, elections occurring during the year, voter registration, sees need to, to drive to early voting sites and, and such for those purposes. So it likely would be even less cost-effective for the, for the treasurer's office because of the lower mileage.
Okay, thank you.
Manager Elters, you want to make a comment?
I, I think.
Supervisor Barelli?
I yield to Supervisor.
Yes, of course.
I'd like to see the recorder come up here and, and.
Sure.
And I understand that on the agenda is the question is maybe is repurposing vehicles going to auction and shifting them around. I, I understand that part, but that's, because that's the actual agenda item. Lydie, can, can, do you, would you, do you have the money in your office budget to be able to get a, a vehicle from the, the motor pool?
So I have requested, Supervisor Barelli, I've requested the mileage and then how much that would cost from my budget. I haven't received a accurate number or a full number of how much I would need to pay from my budget if this were to happen today. We do budget to do motor pool rentals and mileage reimbursement, but I don't have a full figure of what I would need to pay in regards to getting a vehicle from Fleet.
What is your mileage reimbursement rate again?
So 70 cents a mile.
70 cents a mile. My gosh, I was only getting 50 cents a mile. 70 cents a mile. Now, how many times have you had to restrict yourself on going out doing your duties to try to keep the cost down?
Multiple times. I attend all my meetings virtually. Typically, I'm the Arizona Recorder Association President. I don't attend any in-person meetings. I also am on the Board of Directors for ACO, and I'm not attending any personal in-person meetings due to mileage.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to point a clarification here. The, the item says for the county treasurer and the county recorder. So are these for those two individuals, or is it for their offices?
Supervisor Barelli?
My intent was for the two elected officials.
Supervisor Letman, thank you.
I have a question for Director Maury. And again, what's the residual value of these cars once they're sold? How much are we going to get for them?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Letman, I would actually need to defer to our Public Works Director on, on what the actual vehicle values would be, what, what is typically generated at auction. I don't have those details in front of me.
Chairman Lingefelter serves election, Letman, unfortunately, I didn't bring the last auction results with me, but memory serves me right, I'm going to put the law enforcement vehicles aside, the vehicles that are assigned to, say, non-law enforcement department usually bring us, it's definitely four figures. It's like four and $8,000, whether it's a passenger car up to maybe a midsize SUV.
Mr. Chairman.
Go take a look at him first.
Manager Elters?
Specifically to the point of repurposing that Supervisor Barelli brought up, my, my concern and what I want to remind the board of is not just the cost and the value of those vehicles, but the fact that we have a policy that says when a vehicle reaches a certain mileage, we dispose of it for liability reason and reliability. And so to say we're going to change that and hand it to these elected or any others and tell them, go ahead and drive it on the road for long distances is not something that I think we want to do, in all honesty.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Barelli?
Well, to that, to that point, now I can understand not repurposing a, one of the sheriff's vehicles, obviously, because they're beat up like crazy, but we're talking about, you know, a sedan that's got some miles on it. I have a 2018 Chevy Cruze that has 165,000 miles on it, and it's still in great running condition. And we have a great motor pool, and we have annual maintenance and preventive maintenance. I mean, these vehicles are very well maintained. They might have some high mileage on them, but I, I still think that there might be some options in there.
Supervisor Gould?
Since these are for the two elected officials, you still have to amend the policy that states who can, who has the perk of a car. That is spelled out in, in county ordinance. So you need to take a look at that, and also whether they have the authority to take these cars home, which is spelled out in the ordinance also.
Good point. Understood. That's why I'd like to have this discussion.
Have a point.
Supervisor Letman?
I, I agree with Supervisor Gould on that. That way, I'd like to see his move on this is if the two elected officials want cars, I think we should put that as an agenda item and allow them to justify the need to be added to the list of approved drivers for cars.
Make a motion that we table this agenda item then.
I'll second that.
We have a motion second. Additional discussion? We do have our two elected, I don't know if either one of you are comfortable with, with coming up to the podium and just really telling me, like, where is, where's the delta here? Where are we, where are we falling through the cracks in your opinion? Because we have the fleet vehicles, we've got the mileage reimbursement for 70 cents a mile. I think that both of your budgets have, have some, correct me if I'm wrong, mileage and travel accounts, but where are we, where are we falling short here?
Well, I'm just going to tell you what my concerns were. First of all, I used my own vehicle because I had campaign funds left over, and I utilized those, saving the county money. When I ran out of that opportunity, I did go to Fleet, and I discussed this with Manager Elters. All that they offered me was a van or a truck. So, you know, you're traveling to Colorado City in a van on a freeway. I'm already, you know, struggling with that. I don't have experience with the van. Three times I had, I mean, it kind of got rough for me at Fleet because I kept requesting a smaller car, and they said, that's all we have. So I, like I said, discussed it with Manager Elters. That's not an option for me. So again, I'm back at using my personal vehicle and, and claiming mileage. Another thing that we do, the assessor and the recorder and I, we ride together. We often, you know, share just to keep our, our own personal vehicles as well, just to keep the cost down. I certainly am not trying to do anything underhanded. I just want what's fair. We, you, you're, you're supervisors of a district, and the three of us, you know, our district is the entire county. And I certainly would be able to service it better if I had a vehicle to use, and I would appreciate it.
What are, what are your opinion on this, on what's on the agenda right now? I don't know what the mileage would be. I know that, that some cars can still operate safely at high mileage. I'm not disputing that, but would you feel comfortable in being in a vehicle? Let's say you have to go somewhere and there's a really remote stretch in between point A and point B. Are you going to feel comfortable with going into a vehicle that's 120,000 miles or more?
Well, it wouldn't be the best situation, but I would have it checked out prior to going and, you know, go from there. Just this last trip that I just came from for 4th of July to Colorado City, I used my personal vehicle, and it had a problem, and it's only got 40,000 miles on it, so where I had to stop and get repaired. So that's kind of a funny question. You know, I, I certainly would appreciate the vehicle. I certainly would appreciate the vehicle. I would get it checked out before we went. If that's the best we can do, that's the best we can do. I just wanted to let you know that the, the numbers that Luke didn't even give numbers for me because they're so low, but they weren't recorded because of all those reasons. I used my personal vehicle. I didn't ask for mileage reimbursement and I, you know, we rode together. So Lydia, do you have some things to add?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Lincoln Filter, for the opportunity. I would, I have done a little bit of my own research in regards to individual budgets and other departments in the county. With 17 departments that are issued about 75 assigned vehicles, there are six of them that don't routinely meet their 6,000 mileage requirement. So I understand having to prove myself and have that mileage requirement, but once a vehicle is assigned, it seems as though it's never gone back and reviewed. So vehicles don't meet the mileage, but they continue to be able to keep that vehicle assigned to their department. For travel reimbursement, I have two full departments budgeted separately and I budget travel reimbursement, that's hotel, meals, mileage, about 19,000 for 2026. In regards to the Board of Supervisors districts, all five of them, there is about a $14,000 difference there in regards to what everyone else has budgeted for their travel versus what I have for my two departments that does hold about 20 staff members. So knowing that I do service all of Mojave County, needing to get in a vehicle and drive somewhere to attend something or, you know, be in person for things, I think is where the checkout for motor pool is difficult. You need to request that in a timely manner. Also, their fees have changed on April 1st of this year. If you check on a vehicle at 8:00 AM in the morning, you don't return it by 8:00 AM the next day, you're charged a $20 late fee because you have had it longer than the 24-hour period. So I just feel that oftentimes when we get into the IS charges and things like that, we're really just robbing Peter to pay Paul. Other departments are getting more funding from other departments for their services. And truly, it all just comes from general fund from our taxpayers. Also in regards to elected officials being assigned vehicles, I think once an elected official is assigned a vehicle, it continues to stay in that position and once someone else is elected, they just get handed the key over. So I'm certainly, you know, not here to always say like I would just like it to be fair, but I think as all of us are elected officials, we can all respect each other. But to have fairness across the board of what every elected official is receiving. And in regards to your question, sorry if there was a vehicle that had 120,000 miles. I check my own fuel on my own personal vehicle that has over 150,000 miles on it, so I'm not concerned about that and I could certainly change a tire if I had to.
Sure. Not, not casting any shade on fellow elected officials, but you have to also, I think, look at job duties when it, between all elected officials, you know, there's a lot. I don't just get the privilege of, or not the privilege, but the, I don't just deal with election issues. I get all sorts of stuff every single day from everywhere in District One, which is like half the whole county. So I empathize with you though, I definitely do because I have to drive a lot.
Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm concerned what official duties was, were going on on the 4th of July in Colorado City.
I know many elected officials attend Colorado City. I didn't this year.
Yes, we go up there every 4th of July. We have a booth, usually recorder, assessor and myself, and we answer questions. We sign people up. We brought Lydia's literature and we were signing them up to vote. We just answer questions. It's an opportunity to do that, so we take it.
Interesting. Thank you.
Treasurer's offices don't have a satellite office down there, are up there, right?
Although they'd like one. Even Chairman Lincoln Filter was there as well because that's part of his district.
Sure.
Have a comment?
Supervisor Letman?
I wanted to compliment Recorder Durst on your point about the pre-existing car contract. That, that was good. I'm sympathetic to the, the need for the car, but I just want to go through the correct process of changing the policy. So I, I think the idea of the two used cars, I'm not sure I support that, but let's reexamine and see if you qualify, if it's appropriate per all five of us to put you on the list.
Additional discussion or?
We already voted that and we tabled, I think we have a motion.
Re-table it?
You made, you put a motion in a second, but I don't have a final vote.
Yeah.
Table.
To table it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So we'll vote on tabling it, I guess. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I just appear to have it, do have it sorted. Thank you. All right. Item number 67.
Sarah?
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. I just wanted to take this opportunity to provide an update to the board on where we're at in our progress with the new medical examiner RFP and then ultimately to seek some direction from you. I think, let's see, back in May, on May 19th, I provided an update to the board, given our timeline for the RFP process with the expectation that we would do our internal reviews within, within the, I want to say it was the end of May, and then hopefully get a subject matter expert review by mid to late June so that we could publish June 30th. We have been unable to get that subject matter expert review. Melissa, Director Palmer, will be able to speak to all the counties that she did reach out to. We reached out to counties in Utah, Nevada, all of the counties in Arizona that did not have a conflict. We reached out to the National Association of Medical Examiners and no one was willing to review our solicitation. A lot of them don't want to go on record as giving us any kind of advice on how to move forward with the medical examiner contract, or they just didn't feel like they had the expertise to do that. And so we did get somebody through the, I think it was the public, the Arizona Public Health Board that was willing to do an informal review of our RFP. We received feedback from that. Essentially, the feedback was that they appreciated the references to statute throughout the RFP. They asked for clarification. There are multiple areas throughout the solicitation that we call attention to after contract services, and they were just asking why we were putting attention on that. Essentially, we did not make any changes based on that feedback. Our reason for calling attention to after contract services is to make it clear to anyone who receives the contract that even after the contract terminates, they will be asked to provide services to the county in relation to examinations that they conducted while they were our medical examiner. And so at this point, we've not been able to achieve the board's direction to get a forensic pathologist to review our RFP. We are ready to publish the RFP. We actually were hoping to publish it at the end of June, and so if the board would give us the direction to move forward based on the review that we were able to accomplish, we'd like to get it published tomorrow with the expectation that will open in August. I think it was August 7th is what we're looking at, and that would keep us on schedule with the timeline that we had previously given you. We're about a week and a half behind our original schedule, and so if there are delays or multiple questions in the RFP process, we could push that opening date back, but we would still, should have enough time to award a new contract if necessary and transition services, I'm sorry, if necessary. The other feedback that I would give that we received from the person who was willing to review our RFP is that they commented, as we already are aware, that it's a very, we're likely to get limited responses because we have the expectation of a turnkey medical examiner, forensic pathologists are, know they're in high demand and they're sort of used to being catered to. And so there was just feedback that there will be probably a limited pool, if any pool, that responds to a request for turnkey medical examiner services. And Director Palmer can speak to who she actually reached out to, where we were at, but we wanted to give this update to the board and get direction from you, recognizing that we've endeavored to achieve a subject matter expert review, but we have not been successful in that.
Thank you. Director Palmer, do you want to come up to the podium?
So on April 8th, knowing that this had been a discussion item when we first started this conversation, I reached out to all the health directors within Mojave, or sorry, within the state of Arizona. Yavapai County and Pinal County both provide local services under our current service provider for forensic pathology and death investigations. Coconino and Pima County offer specialized consulting for unidentified remains and medical examiner consultation to our current provider and known interested parties. La Paz County has an intergovernmental agreement with Nell County. Cochise indicated that they lack the necessary medical expertise, stating that medical examiners are physicians with pathology residency and forensic pathology fellowships. Apache and Navajo Counties had no one that were available. May 26th, so once our internal process was completed and we still did not have that subject matter expert, May 26th, I reached out to Maricopa. They declined at that time and suggested contacting the National Association of Medical Examiners. On May 30th, we reached out to the National Association of Medical Examiners and Clark County, requesting a review from both of them. June 2nd, Clark County asked for contract details, which we provided them on June 10th, and then we never heard back from the National Association of Medical Examiners. So then, once I followed up with Clark County and did not hear from them on June 17th, I also reached out to Utah to find out if anyone at the Utah Office of the Medical Examiner would be willing to review on our behalf. I talked to them via phone and I followed up with an email and I still have not heard any responses from either of them. And then as Director Acton stated, on June 26th, I reached out to the Arizona Public Health Association, and that's when I was put into contact with a retired public health official who did his unofficial review and recommendations.
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Letman?
Where to begin? Well, this is disappointing news. Shouldn't we see the RFP before you issue it?
Chairman Lincoln Filter, thank you. Supervisor Letman, I think I addressed this question previously. Generally speaking, as the body that's actually going to make the decision on the award, we don't necessarily want to put you in the position that somebody might allege that you had some backdoor conversation with someone or leaked information to someone. I have no problem sharing the RFP with you if you all want to see it. We are going to publish an RFP if the board authorizes us to do that, and at that point it will be public information. If changes need to be made, we can make changes. Our general practice is you guys have adopted our procurement code. You've given me the authority to run the procurement process and contract and make recommendations on behalf of the county, and so we run through that process. It's an established RFP process with evaluation criteria. I think I also want to be clear that we also did have high ranking officials in the sheriff's office review, the county attorney's office. They are all happy with any of the changes that we've made to the scope of the RFP. It is still very similar to the prior RFPs that went out because we are limiting ourselves in this need to have a turnkey solution, recognizing that we don't have a morgue facility. We just kind of have to put something out there and say, we need medical examiner services in accordance with state statute. Tell us how you can provide that. But I, I have no problem. I was actually going to attach the draft as backup for this item and just felt like it would probably be information overload for you all, and we were waiting to see if hopefully we could get a review prior to this meeting.
Well, no one's challenging your ability to put out an RFP, but wasn't there a critical question in this RFP process that was raised by, I think, both groups, which was who's qualified and what background and what degrees, what medical qualifications do you need to be a medical examiner and a forensic pathologist? And I'm very curious how you address that in the RFP.
I can explain essentially where the issue or the proposed issue came from was, I don't remember if we said a board certified in forensic pathology. There's not board certification in forensic pathology is actually what the board talks about being certified in other areas with an emphasis in forensic pathology. So part of a dispute in an appeal was, is this person actually qualified? To the state statute, yes, they are qualified. So one of the things that we did is instead of over limiting competition, we took it back and said, you must be qualified in accordance with state statute. That will come out in the process of reviewing and looking at what the state requires and having experts on our evaluation committee. And I will tell you, we were hopeful that maybe someone from name would respond and that we could potentially use them for the evaluation committee, but we got no response from name. So we're just as disappointed as you. I now feel like I've gone out for medical examiner services. I did the prior two contracts before I left the county and came back, so I'm very aware of our medical examiner contract. It's always a problem and the county's in this unique situation in that we don't want to limit competition and say you must have specifically these certifications or these licensures. It's what does the state require? I think the bigger thing that we are trying to clean up with this medical examiner RFP, and I think it's a sticking point that Supervisor Gould has had multiple times, is that the way our current contract is written, the county hasn't actually named somebody to be the medical examiner. We have somebody administratively functioning as the medical examiner's office and they're contracting for the forensic pathology services. That was a piece that we made sure that we had in the scope of this one, that whoever is selected must name someone to be the county's medical examiner. But what would make somebody qualified as a medic, as a forensic pathologist is based in state statute.
And are we satisfied we know what the state statute says and how it's interpreted correctly? Wasn't that a sticking point also?
That was a sticking point for one individual. We were comfortable with our defense of that concern.
Mr. Chairman?
Manager Elters?
In the absence of the subject matter expert review, which as you heard, we were unable to obtain, I do really want to point out that the two key departments related to those services, which is the sheriff's department and the county attorney's office, both were consulted on these revisions in the current version of the RFP before we release it, if the board was to approve it today. And both were, the consultation took place at the chief deputy in the county sheriff's office as well as the county attorney's office.
This, this contract, this RFP will result in a contract with a direct contract with a provider or?
I believe that we didn't want to, it will result in a named medical examiner. So whatever model is presented to us and scored to be the best value to the county, we didn't want to limit it and say you have to be a forensic pathologist to hold the contract. Our prior medical examiner contract, that was one of the issues. Again, forensic pathologists are limited and there really aren't enough to provide the services going around, and they don't want to be in the business of running a business. They want to be in the business of conducting forensic pathology, medical examinations. And so we didn't want to necessarily limit it to that, but what we did want to require is that whoever offered on it, that there would be a named individual to serve as the medical examiner based on the contract.
Thank you. And what you're looking at or looking for today is approval from the board to issue the RFP.
Yes, because what the direction from the board previously was to not release it until we had a subject matter expert review. We've not been able to achieve that, but we don't want to hold off on issuing the RFP.
And are you still looking at some sort of a technical advisory member to the selection committee or is that off the table not to?
We have not fully formed the committee yet. If there's somebody, the fact that we haven't had anybody who was willing to even just review an RFP tells me that I don't know that we'll find somebody who's willing to sit on a committee that wouldn't have a conflict. But if there's somebody that, that is willing, has that expertise, we'd love to have that. I think the problem is having them sit on the committee means they can't offer on the contract and we've got a limited pool that can do that.
Yeah, it's strange that the professional association wouldn't, you'd think that they'd want to get involved in that kind of stuff to promote their profession. Chairman?
Supervisor Letman?
So this is a state mandated service. There's nobody inside the state of Arizona organization that could be a subject matter expert on this?
That was, sorry Supervisor Letman, I think that that was the attempt that Director Palmer made in the 11th hour. We actually were joking that it was her hail mary request to reach out to the public health, the Arizona Public Health Board and essentially say, this is a state mandated, made mandated service and we're just looking for somebody to review. What we got was a retired professional from the state health board that was willing to look at it, but did not want. Part of the, the struggle that you run into, and I know there's been a reference to if we are building a bridge or building a building, we have an engineer, we have engineers. we have an engineer, we have engineers that are on the panel that help select, we have engineers on staff that help write the scope. Um, in the field, in the medical field, they're not protected. And so if they make a review, this is not something that, that would protect them from, you know, some kind of liability claim or some kind of insurance claim. And so nobody's wanting to go on record and do a peer review essentially. I don't think that they'd be willing to do that as part of a committee where engineers do peer reviews all the time. Engineers put their stamps out and review other people's work all the time. That's not a common practice for doctors who hold malpractice insurance. And so the individual who was willing to review this doesn't have malpractice insurance, isn't covered in that way. So they were willing to give their review based on their knowledge of how the state works. But they did not want to be named and did not want it to necessarily have like their stamp or a reference to them that they provided the review.
Sir Chairman.
Manager.
If I, if I may just wrap it up with in an, in an effort to receive proposals and not put unduly barriers in the way, we took the concerns, the guidance from the board. And, uh, as well as the previous experience and the input from the sheriffs and the county attorney's office. And prepared what we believe is a document that reflect all those, including the board desires and wishes. And we hope to get proposals. When the proposals come in, we'll review them, we'll share the, the, um, results with you. You will, um, hopefully, uh, be in position to award a contract. We've, we've tried to eliminate un, any unduly barriers and set it up in a way that produces proposals for the board to entertain, consider, and hopefully award a contract.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It doesn't sound like what this RFP does is any different than what we currently have now. Other than, than the current, um, uh, contractor would have to say what doctor he's hiring. So really, I don't know that this addresses mine or your concern.
But, Sir Chairman, my, I, I guess my point is we, we've, the model which says put all the services into one package has been, has been explored the first two times. It did not produce a single proposal. The last time it proposed the contract that we have now. And so we're trying to move forward and we learned from those experiences. We, what we heard repeatedly was pathologists, forensic pathologists on top of that, just want to do pathology. They're not interested in running businesses and such. So, um, we tried to leave the door open. We're, we're not trying to predetermine. We're not trying to take away the board ability to consider, entertain, and award. So we've, we've packaged the proposal in such a way, uh, the, the request for proposal in such a way to hopefully produce some proposals for all of us to review and consider. It may, and I, I, I really have no way of knowing other than past experiences. We may be in a similar situation going forward as we were before, but we may not. We may have an, a pathologist that comes in and meets the, the, um, requirement and the modifications that we included in this proposal. So we'll see, but we're not going to release it until you say, go ahead. And we wanted you to be aware of what we're going through before, um, we recommended that to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, they're looking for, um, approval to issue an RFP. Any additional discussion or entertain a motion?
Approval.
You make a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Additional discussion? And call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? As per to have it to have its order. Thank you. Item number 68. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This just, uh, takes into account the additional $43,000. Motion to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it to have its order. Thank you so much. Uh, item number 69, approve revised fiscal year 25 budget for opioid settlement account, uh, 290010308. The revised budget is necessary due to the timing of the fiscal year 25 opiate, uh, opioid grant awards, which were originally budgeted in fiscal year 24, but were not rewarded until early in fiscal year 25. Uh, Director Palmer.
Good afternoon again, Chairman Lingan Filter. This is a, uh, bookkeeping item so that way we can close out fiscal year 25 in the black and not in the red.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Palmer? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. We have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it to have its order. Thank you, Director Palmer. Item number 70, uh, this is under Manager Elters. Discussion possible action, approve the 15 acres of farmland owned by Mojave County and located in the Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District. Approve Mojave County's participation in MVIDD's extended system conservation program and subjecting its farmland to the MVIDD's system conservation implementation agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation and MVIDD's plan of creation. For the purpose of following the farmland to conserve Colorado River water, further approve the landowner SCIA agreement, calendar year 2026, and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement and any associated documents on behalf of Mojave County. Did you want to say anything about that?
Just briefly, this has been going on for three years, Mr. Chairman and board members. Um, we've, we have participated in it. The, the program is between the Bureau of Reclamation due to the Colorado River dwindling water levels and Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District. The board approved it. We're in the third year. In 2023, we received just under 30,000. In 2024, we received 30,300. We're, we just have not finalized 25 yet. The Bureau of Reclamation extended the program. MVIDD is, has decided to go along with the extension. I'm asking the board for approval to extend it one more year so we can participate in the water conservation behind that end.
Any questions? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? As per to have it to have its order. Thank you. All right, item number 71. Discussion possible action, direct staff to bring a development services shot clock policy establishing divine service level timeframes for permit and development review processes in Mojave County. Based on national best practices, regional benchmarking, legal authority, with the goal of improving customer service transparency and internal accountability, back to the, uh, board supervisors within 45 days, review, discussion, and possible board policy adoption. So I put this on the agenda. Um, as many of you know, uh, in July of 2020, or excuse me, January of 2025, uh, Senate Bill 16, or 1162 went into effect. That was, um, for Arizona cities and towns where there's, uh, deadlines now that they have to go through, um, these types of review processes. And if they don't, they don't adopt or, or comply with those processes, then, um, applications are considered approved by default. Um, I put this on the state of Texas, actually, and back in 2019. They had, um, House Bill 3167, um, also expanded by House Bill 3699, which established a shot clock for, for municipal reviews, their development reviews, including, uh, Platts, preliminary Platts, uh, preliminary subdivision or site development plans, construction plans. There's a 30 day deadline to approve or conditionally approve or deny, um, the 15 day rule for subsequent revisions. Um, and, and so Arizona's rule, it did, it did not, uh, carry on to, to counties. Counties were exempted from Senate Bill 1162 for some reason, but I think that the state of Texas is, is a national leader when it comes to development and economic development. They've shown since 2019 that this is something that can be done and they've shown the effects of, the positive effects to that. We have a low tax base. One of the things that is in our circle of control is to broaden our tax base. And I think that when you look at our online planner view services that we're rolling out and, and you, you tie it to something like a Mojave County shot clock or Mojave County can be a county that leads Arizona by example. We combine those two things and we make, we make it really appealing to, uh, do business, whether residential or, or industrial in Mojave County. We, we set that standard. So I put this on the agenda for a discussion and, and possible support. I'd open up to the board. Supervisor Gould.
Sounds like a good idea to me. I know a lot of the complaints that we often get are based with complaints, um, on timing on the building department. But I think we should have a hard deadline that if, if everything is in order, then the people should be able to get their permit. And if we can't get to their review, then we're just holding up their, their, uh, right to use their property if they determine, as they determine. Thank you.
I've had folks, uh, business owners and others that have, that have told me, and, and you don't know exactly what's going on, but, um, this, these shot clocks would be contingent upon a full and complete submittal. Right. So if you're assuming if they have their full and complete submittal, which I think in, in the electronic process, we're being told that you're not going to be able to get your checks on the online system unless you have in fact, submitted a full and complete submittal. That's when the shot clocks would, would go into effect. Um, I've heard, I've heard, had people tell me that it takes up to a year and a half to two years to get business plans and things like that done. So hopefully that, I don't think that's all the time, but, um, I think having something in writing to go along with our electronic planner view system, um, would really position Mojave County as, as the leader in the state. Um, Texas again, Texas is killing it. They have this, they've had it since 2019 and they're doing a, just a bang up job in residential and in, in business economic development. So, um, I say that we take a, we take a step forward and we lead the state, um, as one county in the state to, to show people that it can be done here too.
Supervisor Martin.
I'd like to hear from developmental services.
Yeah.
Get, get their feedback on this.
Bet.
Cause it's dropping it right in their lap.
Chairman Lingan Filter, Supervisor Martin, uh, do you have a specific question that you're looking to get answered or just?
Well, have you guys been aware of this? Do you see this coming down the pipeline?
Uh, I was made aware of it last week, so took a look at it last week. Um, I mean, so from a planning and zoning standpoint, a lot of what planning and zoning does already has, uh, a shot clock, so to speak. We have pretty strict deadlines on things for site plan reviews. Um, and some of, I know some of our other reviews have that as well, but not all of them. Um, and so, uh, we'd be happy to take a look at what other jurisdictions are doing and, uh, what our current timeframes are and trying to figure out something that's going to work and, uh, that we could be held accountable for. Uh, I would like to point out that the, my hope is that in doing this, that shot clock would be for the county to do their review and send revisional comments back to the applicant. I know from, uh, our perspective, a lot of times the delays in getting a site plan approved or a building permit approved is the county will send out corrections and then it takes weeks or months to get a, a response back. Uh, and then we, we go through and do our review again. And so a lot of times, uh, that, uh, the delay comes while it's not currently under review.
When you're holding the basketball, that's when the shot clock is running. When you don't have the basketball, that's when the shot clock is not running, right? So, so it's, it's more, more of lines of like what I, what I've seen Texas do. I think that's good. But in addition, I mean, if you want to talk about other professional associations that recommend this type of things, I mean, ICMA, they've come out with recommendations, the APA, American Planning Association, they have recommendations, you know, endorsing shot clocks. The National Associated Home Builders, you know, they, they have recommendations on shot clocks. You have all these professional organizations that are involved in the public sector, um, recommending these things. I think it's something that is a good thing for us to take a look at and adopt.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor, uh, Manager Elters.
The way you have it ordered, you, you're given staff 45 days to come back. So we'll take it. We'll, we'll do our best with it. It's going to include not only planning and zoning, but building permits and such. Um, I will tell you though, um, during the discussion before that law became law, that you just referenced, it initially included both the cities, towns, and counties. There was a lot of pushback, uh, simply because of what Supervisor Gould just said. There was a concern and lack of recognition in the, in the legislation as to when, when does the clock stop? And when does it start again? Often enough, you get submittal, you make comments, you give it back. And the, the clock, it must stop because then the applicant could take one week or it could take a month. And so that was really, there was a lot of concern there initially. I'm just sharing with you my, my memory from that. Uh, obviously they, the legislation received amendments and such, and then it, it left the counties out and, and kept the cities and the towns. We'll, we'll put our best foot forward. We'll offer something to the board. You can take a look at it and, uh, we'll see if we can be, uh, pioneers and leaders in that arena.
I think it's a great, a great, um, opportunity to learn from everybody else that's done it before and, and, uh, incorporate all the good stuff and then bring something back for this board to consider.
Would you like a motion?
Uh, please.
I'd like to move that the Development Services Department be directed to develop a shot clock policy per the language in item 71 and it come back to us within 45 days for review by the board of supervisors.
Second.
No motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it, do have it so ordered. Thank you. Item number 72, uh, discussion of possible action. Um, county manager and your economic development director shall consult with each individual county supervisor on a regular basis to develop ongoing district specific economic development priorities and deliverables. Consistent with the board adopted, um, comprehensive economic development strategy, the county manager shall direct the economic development director not to work on any initials or projects that have not first been approved by either a district county supervisor, if they are district specific, or by the full board of supervisors if they are countywide in nature. Economic development director shall provide a weekly written report of activities by district submitted through the county manager's office to be delivered to each respective county supervisor. Any, uh, economic development directors submitted through the county manager's office shall continue to provide the full board of supervisors with quarterly activity reports as previously directed by the board of supervisors. Uh, I put this on the board's, uh, agenda today just to make sure that, um, we, I think that they're, they're now our only, uh, performance based budgeting department. So, um, as a part of, of, um, I guess, you know, we're going to be putting benchmarks and things like this, uh, or, or some things that they need to be working on. So I'm just looking, um, as far as district one is concerned, I want to work to make sure that, um, I have enough information, um, at the end of the fiscal year through something like this, um, so that I'm able to, um, appropriately evaluate the performance based budgeting component of this department. So, um, there's, there's a few things that, um, are priorities in my district. I just want to make sure that they get attention and I would assume that there are similar concerns in other districts. I'd open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Manager Elters, thank you.
Since the board members aren't chiming in, I, if I may, um, I wonder if there's a little bit of leeway here. I, um, I have probably a little bit more concern with this one than I did with item 71. Uh, specifically the two parts. One, it says, um, you know, the, the economic development director should not do anything without the prior approval of the district supervisor or to establish that. Um, that's one, um, which is often enough, those are, um, there's an NDA involved and, and they're, they're, they're not wanting to get a lot of publicity before they're ready to move forward. So, and, and often enough, we don't know what district it is in. And so she's out there reaching out, trying to find out what their needs are. You know, related to workforce or land or, or a combination of both. This language appears to me and, and please allow me, I, I'm not trying to be critical. I just want it to be candid in my, uh, comments with you. It, it may be, it may be harder to do this, meaning to get with a supervisor and, and have a, uh, a preapproval before, uh, you can proceed. It makes it even harder in a couple of districts to, and three in particular, because those districts are literally in a city and the city has their own economic development and she works with them. The last comment that I have on it, and that's why I said, is there a little bit of leeway here? I am not trying to be critical, but also. I am not trying to be critical, but also, you know, weekly reports on it, on a, on economic development, there's really not a whole lot. I, I would, I would venture and say there would not be a whole lot to report weekly. I, I just wanted to offer that in, in feedback.
I appreciate that feedback, Manager Elters. Whenever I put something on the agenda, I view it as a starting point because I'm only one supervisor. So I'm hoping for some, some discussion. Right? Constructive criticisms and feedbacks and things like this so that we get to something that either a majority of the board will agree with and endorse, or a majority of the board says, no, this is a bad idea. We don't want to do this. There's been a few things that, and I don't know the eloquent language to say it, but I, I know that your public works director has their marching orders, is very clear what they do every week. It's very clear what Development Services does every week. I don't know who determines what her priorities are, what she gets involved with. I mean, the Dennis Quaid thing, that came out of nowhere. I don't know where that came from. We say we have a tourism, but we don't even have a visitor's guide. I've heard from one of the chambers, the Bullhead City Chamber actually said that we commandeered one of their Bullhead Tourism Meetings and called it a different county tourism meeting. I just don't know what's going on. I don't know, I mean, it just seems like, and no offense to Tammy, but she's just going out and getting involved with whatever she wants. And I don't know that that's really appropriate. And so how do we, how do we set some, some guardrails and some projects that are important to each one of the districts so that, that are qualified under economic development? So we all know what she's doing. That's, I, I don't mean to be insensitive, but that's kind of how I feel about it. I don't know what we're, what we're, what we're getting. Supervisor Gould.
Mr. Chairman, didn't we limit her work to the unincorporated areas of the county at one time?
She, please, correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Elters, but our economic development director, I think that the, with the agreement is, is that we're forced first chair in the unincorporated areas and maybe supportive role in a city or a community where they have their own economic development function.
Yeah, I just vaguely remembered that. So if you're inside the two districts that are almost fully encompassed by cities, there begin to be a supportive role rather than primary role.
Minister Chairman and Supervisor Gould, you're absolutely right, and that is truly the practice. We don't pursue economic development in those cities other than to work with them. And when an opportunity comes in, at least that's been the practice in the last couple of years since I've been here, is we don't know when an opportunity comes in until it comes in or unless we're aware of something and we're pursuing it. Either way, there are times depending on the needs of the opportunity or the, or the, the company, the developer, that they, they have specific needs in mind. So what we try to do, what she tries to do, and she's here, I can have her come up and provide more details, is to have them locate in Mojave County. If Mojave County unincorporated is a good suitable solution for them, wonderful. If it's, if Mojave County is good solution, but one of the cities being the Kingman Industrial Area or elsewhere is still, meets their need, then she puts them in touch with them and she tries not to lose them and, and facilitate that transaction. So that is really, it's a supportive role in those communities, not a leader role.
Yeah, I was in, more in reference to the reporting that you said there'd be, there would be too frequent reporting, but if you're, those aren't primary, the primary in those two districts, then that would not be a problem for.
Thank you for the clarification. What I, what I meant on that one, Supervisor Gould, was the interaction with the supervisor in advance and getting prior approval to pursue things because in District 2 and 3, there's really not a whole lot outside the city limit. And the city leads their own is what I meant, and I'm sorry if I was not clear.
If it's in regards to non-disclosure agreement, the supervisor could sign the non-disclosure agreement also.
Well, I put it on for, for food for thought. I know that, I know the projects and the things that the Kingman Economic Development Department are working on, they're, they're very, very, very proactive. They're doing a lot of stuff. James Gray down in Lake Havasu City Partnership for Economic Development, very, very proactive with what he's doing. I know Toby Cotter, I think he takes the, the lead on economic development for Bullhead. They're, they're, he's a hard charger. I wish we had more Toby Cotters. I just don't know, you know, comparable, what we're doing in the unincorporated areas. And, you know, we say we have tourism, but we, what are we doing for tourism? I don't know what we're doing for tourism. What are we doing for tourism? What do we have? That's why I think something like this could, could really help eliminate some of that confusion. Supervisor Martin.
You know, when I read over this, I look at it, you know, my initial thought was, man, this is really restrictive, you know, when you got these timelines on there. And like I say, the way it's written, just, to me, it's so restrictive that, okay, you got a week, he's got a week, whatever. And, and I don't know that, that we can do that and without putting a real burden on them where they're worried about making the report rather than doing what they're supposed to be doing. But you're right. I mean, you know, not knowing, there, there's got to be some kind of a process that we can each get what we want out of this.
Well, I'd like to propose, because we're getting late in the, in the day and I'm getting tired of being here too. So I know everybody is, but I'd like to postpone this or carry this forward for a month, another 30 days. Again, when I put something on the agenda, it's, look at it as just a starting point. You know, it's like when a bill is introduced in the beginning of a session, it could be, the language changes, right? So, so just think about it and we'll come back in maybe a month with some more, some more clearer ideas.
Do you want a motion to continue that for 30 days?
Yes, please. Thank you. Yes, I would.
Motion to continue the item for 30 days approximately.
Thank you very much. I have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Normally we would have a call to the public, but we have nobody signed up for call to the public. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak during call to the public? Hearing none? We are adjourned.